I gotta make sure I'm in the right. Starting out with Housing Authority?
That's a great question.
Yeah, so who's that?
Me.
Okay. I think you go first, first.
So we roll call into that, we don't do pledge and all that, first please?
Just roll call for Housing Authority.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, can we have the roll call for Housing Authority? Commissioner Beard?
Here.
Commissioner Beckles?
Here.
Commissioner Bowie?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner K. Nguyen?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Here.
Commissioner Solario?
Here.
Vice Chair T. Nguyen?
Yeah.
And Chair Klumpenstein?
Here. I don't have any cards for oral communications, so we move on to consent items. We have 2A and 2B. 2A is receive and file the Housing Authority status report for May 2017, and 2B is receive and file minutes from the meeting held on May 23, 2017.
Move to make a motion?
Second.
One moment, I just got kicked off the system. Oh.
Moving on to public hearings, 3A, adoption of a resolution approving the Garden Grove Housing Authority annual budget for fiscal year 2017-18 and fiscal year 2018-19. Do we have a staff report on that?
Good evening, Chairwoman and Commissioners. The Section 8 Housing Assistance Program is federally funded through the Department of Housing and Urban Development to assist very low-income families, seniors, and disabled persons in payment of rent on privately-owned rental units. The Garden Grove Housing Authority subsidizes over 2,200 families and administer an additional 300 families from incoming portability. Incoming portabilities are participants from housing authorities in other jurisdictions who moved into Garden Grove. An administrative fee is paid to the Garden Grove Housing Authority to administer these families. Our Section 8 rental units are inspected before admission and annually or biannually to ensure they are decent, safe, and sanitary. Each year, Housing Authority staff performs over 2,400 inspections. We also administer the Family Sufficiency Program. This program is for our current Section 8 participants and is designed to encourage tenant participation in education and career development. In addition, the Housing Authority has assets from the former Garden Grove Housing -- sorry, from the former Garden Grove agency. These assets include land purchase with housing set aside funds and several affordable housing agreements. Revenue generated from these agreements is used for the operational costs of administering the assets. I will now turn over to Mr. Okerike to continue with additional information.
Thank you. Okay. Well, in terms of the budget being presented tonight, we're presenting two fiscal year budgets, fiscal year 2017-18 and fiscal year 2018-19 for the Housing Authority. Both fiscal years are balanced, beginning with the first, 2017-18. We have a total of resources, including section eight allocations that total at $32.8 million dollars. The voucher program, which is essentially the section eight of the housing component, has expenditures of $31.2 million. $122,000 is allocated to the family sufficiency program, and the rest of it covers administration and property management cost. Similarly, in 2018-19, the total resources, it's about the same, $32.8 million dollars, and allocated in the same manner about $31.2 million to the voucher program, and the rest of it to administration, property management, and this family sufficiency program. That is the total budget being presented. As I said, it's a balanced budget, and we're recommending that you adopt the budget for the two fiscal years.
Over the last couple of months, I got a lot of, you know, phone call and question from the communities. They are very concerned about the proposed federal budget cut, that, you know, amount to, you know, $13 billion. They are concerned whether the budget cut will affect the Section 8 of housing, and if it is, any estimate how much it would affect us, and what can we do, you know, is there any way we can talk to our Congress representatives to, you know, do something about it? And also, if we cannot stop the cut, can we talk to our state to see if they can complement it?
It is a concern. At this time, we do not have a budget, HUD budget for 2017. We're operating under the continuing resolution, just the best estimate that we can do, based on our discussions with other housing authorities and with HUD. And HUD, we are expecting maybe perhaps within the next couple of weeks, we'll actually have a budget for us. HUD estimate, working directly with Garden Grove, that we may have sufficient money to keep the current participants on the program. Now, whether we have extra money to help the people on a waiting list is an issue and is something that HUD really does not have an answer right now.
When we say we have enough money to assist the people that are already in the plan, does that mean they will continue to be the plan without any reduction in the assistance that they have?
This is what we are expecting, that we're able to continue to help the current participants on the program without having to cut their assistance.
I see that. I think that they would be very relieved to know that they might not be, you know, their system might not be cut. Thank you.
Any other questions? I believe at this time, I need to open this up for public comment, for public hearing. Anyone that would like to address the podium on this issue topic? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And do we have a motion?
I'll move adoption of the resolution approving the budget.
Second. Moving on to four items for communication, seeing none, we'll move on to matters for Chair Commissioners and Directors. Anyone have any comments? I would just like to make mention, if I could, quickly, I wanted to thank Danny Nguyen and Maria Stipe. We toured the Housing Authority offices recently. I was also with Councilmember Tuha Nguyen, and it was a fantastic opportunity to see the day in and day out and what really is accomplished, which is quite astounding within the Housing Authority. So I really appreciated that opportunity and time. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go ahead and adjourn. The next regular Housing Authority meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 25, 2017, at 6:30 here at the Community Meeting Center.
Thank you. We'll convene City Council in a moment. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Councilmember Beard?
Here.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Here.
Councilmember T. Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Bowie?
Here.
Councilmember Klumpenstein?
Here.
Councilmember K. Nguyen?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Can I ask Kingsley to lead us in vocation, and then followed by Councilmember Chris Beard to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance thereafter?
Okay, please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, as we gather here this evening to consider and make decisions on issues before us, provide us with the guidance and wisdom necessary to make the best decisions for this fine Garden Grove community that we serve. Amen.
Please face flag, right hand on your heart, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The civil republic, the republic stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty
Thank you. Okay, moving right along to presentations, we have a couple tonight. The first one, 1A, Community Spotlight, recognition of Seven Leaves.
Mr. Mayor, before we get started, I did want to let the council members know, I bought all of you a drink before we make this presentation.
It's the green one.
There is Scott, there is an escra one, so maybe we have to vote to see where would that one go. Oh, it's to you.
All right. I got the one without caffeine.
Working on my product placement skills here.
All right, now that everybody has gotten their drink, I can just start it. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council takes great pleasure in recognizing Seven Leaves Cafe for receiving the 2017 Family-Owned Small Business of the Year Award by the Small Business Administration on June 9 at the Disneyland Hotel. Would Surni, Quang, Ha, and Vin please come forward? Each year, the President of the United States issues a proclamation announcing National Small Business Week to recognize the contributions of America's small business owners. As part of the National Small Business Week, the U.S. Small Business Administration highlights the impacts of outstanding small business owners at local events across the country. Seven Leaves is a coffee and tea house that believes the key to a healthy and happy life is living in harmony with nature and humanity. Their mission is to provide products and services that nurture, inspire, and enrich the human experience through their coffee, teas, and desserts. Seven Leaves Cafe first opened in Garden Grove Little Saigon in January 2012, and since then, expanded to nine locations in Orange County region with over 350 employees. Seven Leaves also joined nonprofit organizations to give back to the needy, recognizing the very principle in which their core values and ideals stems from. At this time, the Mayor and City Council would like to present Seven Leaves Cafe with a gift in recognition of their selection as 2017 Family-Owned Small Business of the Year. The city congratulates the Nguyen brothers for their achievements. The city of Garden Grove looks forward to many more future accomplishments from Seven Leaves. Congratulations, guys.
Would you like, please say a few words, and then we'll take a picture with you?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I was nervous before, but then our city manager, Scott Styles, pulled the drink out, and then I got all touched. I was like, oh, I didn't expect that. But I would say this, is that we are residents, long-term residents. We grew up here, all of our four brothers. One of them couldn't be here today. But I can tell you, we've seen transformations over 30 years, but never before have we seen this change, this new refresh board here, councilmen's of servant leaders, and all the amazing projects we've seen. Garden Grove, it's happening right now. So, you know, from the Shaheen project, the cottage, and Steel Craft announcement there with Great Wolf Lodge, but, you know, the one thing that we feel very proud of is, you know, Seven Leaves was born in Garden Grove. We created it, and we chose Garden Grove because Garden Grove is our hometown. And to be able to be recognized today in front of everyone, and to have so much outpour and support and love from a city, then, I am kind of biased, because we grew up here, but we just opened up our 10th location, and going on to number 11, we opened up, the last location was in Alhambra. And it's very different, right? And I'd like to share that with the community, so they know that what we have here in Garden Grove is very unique, right? And I tell every city that you should aspire to be like Garden Grove, because they're making a change, and they're working together in harmony. And, you know, for us in Seven Leaves, we have this culture of care, and it really, it's rooted from our family. And our four brothers, we lived together, we grew up, you know, humbled in one room for a very long time, so we're very used to sharing and giving. So when we work with our teammates, you know, we have this culture that we want to be very different from corporate. We want to embed a culture of care, and what we see within Garden Grove is, there's this very deep culture of care that exists. And it's very cool, and we have one of the coolest mayor I've ever known out of all these cities I've been to. It's a very cool place. It's a very cool place where millennials now are looking at the city, and they're like, what is happening here? Right? So we're very proud, not only to have developed a brand and a business, but to really starting to have this outpour of love from the city. So, you know, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts, and, you know, we'll make you guys proud. Thank you.
I would like to, well, just wanted to say a quick word. I would like to congratulate Seven Leaves, and I put the green drinks up here on the podium, so that, you know, our resident know that Seven Leaves doesn't sell only coffee. They sell a wide variety of very interesting drinks. And congratulations, you are correct, we have a very dynamic, young, and fresh mayor. In fact, the youngest mayor in our city history, and a very young and dynamic seven members. Most of us are between 21 and 24 years old, so. So we bring fresh idea, and hopefully, this is the, you know, the fresh start of a new era for Garden Grove.
Thank you very much for that. Cheers.
Can we ask you guys to come up right in here and take a picture with us? We'll kind of crowd in together and we can get a few shots.
You have to be in the picture too, Scott.
Yeah, we need Maya in this picture, I don't know why, just to kind of freshen things up. Maya, can you come up?
Yeah, come on.
Maya?
Come on, sweetie.
Please.
Stand right up on the panel.
She did one where we're like cheering. We'll do a cheers side too.
Okay.
I'm trying to convince her to be on the. There we go. Yeah.
Stand up, stand up.
Okay. One, three.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thanks, congratulations.
Remember us little people.
Congratulations.
Sunny. All right, I don't know how we're going to top that, but we'll move on to item 1B, our next community spotlight. And this is in recognition of members of the American Legion Post 555.
Tonight, I would like to recognize the members of the American Legion Albert E. Swab, Post 555, for their efforts to honor veterans. As a parochial veteran's organization devoted to mutual helpfulness, the American Legion was chartered and incorporated by Congress in 1919, focusing on service to veterans, the families, and communities. The Legion evolved from a group of veterans of World War I into one of the most influential nonprofit groups in America. And today, the Legion is the nation's largest wartime veterans organization. It is committed to mentoring youth and sponsoring programs in the communities, advocating patriotism and honors promoting strong national security and serving veterans. Located in Midway City, the American Legion Albert E. Swab, Post 555, was chartered and incorporated in 1938. Later that year, the Auxiliary Unit 555 was also chartered. In 2007, the American Legion Riders Chapter 555 was formed, and in 2011, the Sons of American Legion squadrons were formed. Veterans Helping Veterans is their motto, and currently, Post 555 is under renovation. The goal is to rebuild that post where veterans and family can feel at home. At this time, I would like to present the members of the American Legion Albert E. Swab, Post 555, with a CD certificate in recognition of their efforts to honor the tradition of commemorating and helping veterans. And I would like to invite our Mayor Steve Jones to join me in presenting this certificate to the Post 555 of the American Legion.
Thank you so much for your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Charles.
Thank you. Good seeing you again. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let me present this to you guys as well, just a little.
Very nice.
It's nice.
Thank you.
Cool.
I can keep this, huh?
You, you got one step. Feel free to say some words, and then if you guys come up for a picture after, it'd be great.
Hi, my name is Tim DeSina. I'm the post commander at 555. We've worked the last two years very hard to support our veterans, going to the VA, doing bingo, helping the Boy Scouts, and also the junior Marines. And we have a lot of different units at our post. We have the 40 and 8. We have the Senior Marine League. We have the auxiliary, which is a unit of the post, and we have American Legion riders, which do a lot of outreach, community service, riding their bikes around. They do a lot of fundraising and go to a lot of different events. The post ourselves, we've been striving on supporting the community and building the post up. We've been working really hard on that, raising, doing a lot of fundraisers to raise money, to bring that old building back up, to make it shine, and represent well the area and the community. I want to thank Pat Bowie.
Pat Bowie.
Pat Bowie, and Mayor Stephen Jones, and everyone else. We're going to continue on building our post up and helping out the community and our veterans. Thank you.
Can you hear it faintly in the distance? The Gary Owen. It was 140 years ago last Sunday that Colonel George Armstrong Custer and members of the 7th Cavalry faced a disaster a short distance from the Little Big Horn River. With my heritage, it's difficult for me to pick sides, because my ancestors were here before the first settlers. But commemorating events in our military history has always been a part of the American Legion, and we are proud to commemorate every event, whether we won or lost, that involved our veterans. And we want the community to participate with us. The American Legion post is not just for American Legion members. We have dinners, we have various events that go on all year long, and the public is always welcome to come and join us and enjoy the things that we're doing there, and learn a little more about our American Legion. So please, our post is on Beach Boulevard. You probably noticed the bean bags and the statues.
Blankets.
And the blankets, but that's where our post is. So come by, say hello, and get a list of what programs we have, what events we're going to have, and come and join us, especially on Thursday night when we have our dinners. They are tremendous. So again, we welcome everyone to our post. Thank you.
Alls I got to say, God bless America.
Can you guys please come up? You're good.
One, two, three.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, for all you do. So you actually got to share that?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Thank you.
Good seeing you again.
Yes. You're very welcome. Thank you guys so much.
Thanks for your help, Erwin.
Oh, sure.
Charles, don't go anywhere. We're moving on to.
He likes to talk.
We already know. We're moving on to oral communications, and I only have one card. If anybody else would like to speak, please get a card to our city clerk, but otherwise, Charles, you're up.
Guess I'm putting on a different hat. Now, what I'm going to talk about is something that's on the agenda, and that is involving Magnolia Street. Right now, Magnolia Street is undergoing renovation from the freeway all the way up to Garden Grove Boulevard. And believe me, it is a madhouse trying to get through there on a busy time of the day. But the outcome is going to be wonderful. We're going to have a beautiful. We're going to have a beautiful road from Trask up to Garden Grove Boulevard. It's just gonna take some time, and people are going to have to be patient. But what I noticed on the agenda, there was an item about further work on Magnolia, and that involved underground utilities. And my question is whether the schedule is going to coincide with the work that's already being done from the freeway to Garden Grove Boulevard. This is going to go from Garden Grove Boulevard to Orangewood. So I'm hoping that the planning will be such that at least we can get one phase of it done and completed before we go on to the next, or people are just gonna have a terrible time getting from the freeway all the way up to Orangewood on Magnolia. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council? That's the only public comment card I have? Okay, seeing none, we will close oral communications, move on to written communications. I'm sorry, I do want to bring one thing forward. This would normally come under matters, but I wanted to bring it forward just while there's still people here and we're still fresh. And I would like to ask Councilmember Klaufenstein to give her report out on vector control matters.
Thank you. I do have a few things to bring up this evening, one of which is vector control will be on Main Street this Friday at 4:00 PM. We have a giant inflatable mosquito that is part of the vector control arsenal. It's quite enormous. And it is going to be there to basically bring some awareness to the invasive mosquitoes that we're dealing with here in Orange County. It is National Mosquito Awareness Week, started June 25th and will go until July 1st. And again, it's on Main Street, June 30th at 4:00 PM. This gives residents a chance to come down and learn more about these mosquitoes. It's very interactive. There'll be a booth, a DJ, there'll be prizes giving out, and it'll basically last the time that the car show is on Main Street. So I definitely urge the public to come out and see what vector control is all about, speak to the professionals, learn more about what you can do to protect your home as we move forward into the mosquito season. And you can go to the vector control website or Facebook page for more information. I know I've posted it on my Facebook, and I'm sure the city will be posting flyers as well. Also, I wanted to report that the staff here at Garden Grove has created a West Nile Virus page on the Garden Grove city website. I was able to take a look at it earlier today. It's fantastic. It has some really wonderful information, not just about West Nile virus and these potential threats from mosquitoes, but press releases and other information, contact information for vector control. So it's easily searchable if you go onto the city website. So again, it's just another avenue, another vehicle for you to get information and know more about what's going on with vectors in Orange County and more specifically, Garden Grove. And then finally, I wanted to discuss some very serious news. The Vector Control District has confirmed the first mosquito sample to test positive for West Nile virus. The mosquito was collected from the city of La Habra on June 15th. Obviously, there's been press releases that have gone out. There was an article in the Register. I know I've posted about it, but this is my first actual chance to discuss it at a council meeting. So really, what this means is it's crucial that residents help protect themselves and the community from mosquitoes. And some ways, obviously, that we can continue to do that are to eliminate standing water around your home. Make sure your windows and screen doors are in good repair. If needed, the district has free mosquito fish, so if you have an ornamental pond or something like that on your property, you can get those fish from the district. Obviously, wear bug repellent, that's an obvious one. And please report dead birds and neglected swimming pools to the Vector District. And I'm always available for questions if anyone has them. And I really appreciate the city and staff working so closely with vector control. This is a serious issue, and I really appreciate the support and help. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to...
How big is this mosquito that you...
It's 13 feet tall. You can go inside of it. It's very interactive. It's pretty cool.
I was wondering...
Yeah, it's kind of like this giant tent, really, inflatable mosquito. And then when you go inside, there's a lot of education on the walls to teach you about the different kinds of mosquitoes, why they're a threat, how they're a threat, what we're doing about it within the district and in the county. So it's pretty fascinating.
Perhaps we could have it parade in our Scrambory Festival. I mean, parade.
Sure. We can all, like, walk underneath it and carry it down. Absolutely.
Okay, we'll move on to written communications. I'm not aware of any unless... Okay. With that, we'll recess and conduct other agencies' business, so we'll move on to the successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call a roll for successor?
Member O'Neill?
Here.
Member T. Nguyen?
Here.
Member Bowie?
Here.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Kay Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here. We already did oral communication simultaneously with city council, so we'll move on to consent items. We just have receive and file the minutes and approval of the warrants. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Second.
Call the vote?
Seven yes votes.
Thank you. Move on to public hearings. One item on here, and this is adoption of resolution for the biennial successor agency budget, and we'll start with a staff presentation.
Mr. Mayor, we do have the biennial proposed budget for the successor agency for the two fiscal years, fiscal year 17, 18, and fiscal year 18, 19. It is a balanced budget for both years, and basically, the successor agency is money in, money out. The monies that come in, you know, come through the county trust fund that now houses all the tax increment revenues of the former redevelopment agency. And most of the expenditures are applied to us, all the recognized obligation payments that are approved by the state. And basically, all of that is all geared towards paying for the legacy obligations of the old redevelopment agency and some of the legacy projects that are still continuing. In terms of budget numbers, for fiscal year 17, 18, revenue total is about $20.3 million. Operations and overhead, about $581,000 is allowed for that, and the rest of it, $19.7 million goes towards paying the recognized obligation payments on the approved schedule. Similarly, for 2018, 19, we are projecting revenue estimate of $18.5 million. The operations and overhead is estimated to be, that will be allowed, will be approximately $590,000, and the rest of it, again, goes towards the legacy obligations of the old redevelopment agency that are on the recognized obligation payment schedule. And that concludes the presentation, and with that, we're recommending that you adopt the biennial budget, the fiscal year 2017, 18, and 2018, 19 budget for the successor agency. And I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Just by process of public hearing, so we'll ask any questions of staff at this point, and then we can open up the public hearing. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. I don't have any cards, but is there anyone who would like to speak on the successor agency budget resolution? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Members, comments?
Motion, motion to approve.
Second it.
Call the vote?
Seven yes votes.
Thank you. Any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn to the sanitary district meeting now.
Okay, with that, I'd like to ask the secretary to call the roll, please.
Member Bowie?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Kay Nguyen?
Here.
Member T. Nguyen?
Here.
Vice President O'Neill?
Here.
And President Beard?
Here. So item one, we've already covered oral communications. So number two is consent items, which would be the receive and file the minutes for the meeting of May 23rd, 2017. Contender motion?
Motion to...
Second.
Motion second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Okay, next item is item 3A, a report detailing the fees to be collected on tax roll for sewer services outside the city limits, and adoption of a resolution authorizing the collection of the tax roll of fees for sewer services provided by Garden Grove Sanitary District outside the city limits. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes, Mr. Coromoto will give that presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeri. District Board President and Board Members. Item 3A is the annual process that allows the Garden Grove Sanitary District to collect sewer service charges on the property tax roll for those sewer customers located outside the city limits that do not receive water services from the city. This is a section of the district in the county area near Anaheim and Stanton, just north of Catella Avenue, between Brookhurst and Gilbert. In order to place these sewer charges on the tax roll, the board must hold a public hearing and weather to approve the list of charges proposed to be collected on the tax roll and adopt the resolution approving the report. Adopting the attached resolution would approve the annual report and authorize the collection on the tax roll of sewer service fees for properties served by the Garden Grove Sanitary District and located outside the city limits. The total number of parcels that these fees apply to is 1,856, and the total amount to be collected is $258,511.42. It is recommended that the Sanitary District Board of Directors conduct a public hearing, adopt the attached resolution approving the report, and authorizing the collection on the tax roll of sewer service fees for properties served by the Garden Grove Sanitary District and located outside the city limits by five affirmative votes, and direct staff to file the necessary documentation with the county for the collection of the fees on the property tax bills. This concludes staff's report, and we are available for questions.
Any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so we will open it at this time. Anyone here to talk about this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we, at this time, will receive a report from the secretary regarding protests received regarding the proposed assessment.
Mr. President, as of the close of the public hearing, the city clerk's office has received no protests regarding this assessment. There is not a majority protest.
Jeff made me promise I wouldn't ask any tough questions, so I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion.
There's a motion.
Motion. I'll second it, and I just want to let everybody know, item 3A, that's for a small island in District Two that is Garden Grove, but it's sewer only. For Garden Grove provides the sewer for that area, but not the water. So that's why this is a separate item, to collect those sewer fees. So just to let everybody know, it's in District Two.
Can we take them all three together, or do we have to separate them? 3A, one at a time? I'll move.
So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, I second it.
And that's for 3A?
This is for 3A.
Motion second. Call for the vote.
Seven yes votes.
Next item is 3B, which is also a public hearing, and with that, it's a report on the delinquent accounts for refused collection and disposal service bills, and adoption of a resolution authorizing imposition of liens on parcels with delinquent accounts. Staff presentation?
Item 3B asks that the Sanitary District Board adopt the attached resolution, adopting the report, authorizing the imposition of liens for collection of delinquent refused collection and disposal fees on the property tax bills. For public services bills customers quarterly for refused collection and solid waste disposal. If a billing remains unpaid for a period of 60 days or more, at the end of the fiscal year, this assessment process may be implemented. The last relevant billing was prepared and mailed in February of this year. All charges remaining on that billing became delinquent May 1, 2017. 60 days after the delinquency date, the delinquent amount plus an associated 10% penalty may be filed with the county auditor. Payments will be accepted through July 14th, and the remaining balance will be placed on the tax roll. The amount submitted and recorded by parcel would be collected at the same time and in the same manner as regular property taxes. The parcels also become subject to the same penalties and to the same procedure for foreclosure and sale as provided for ordinary county taxes. Prior to the fees becoming a lien against the property, the individual property owner is notified of the delinquent amount and the date and time of the public hearing. To further ensure that all parties are aware of the potential lien, a notice announcing this hearing date was published in the Orange County News, June 7th and June 14th of this year. It is recommended that the Board of Directors conduct a public hearing, adopt the attached resolution authorizing the imposition of liens for the collection of delinquent refused collection and disposal fees by five affirmative votes, and direct staff to file the necessary documentation with the county for the collection of the delinquent fees on the property tax bills. This concludes staff's report, and we are available for any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, so we'll open it at this time. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask to receive the report from the secretary regarding protests received regarding the proposed assessment.
Mr. President, as of the close of the public hearing, the city clerk's office has received no protests regarding this assessment. There is not a majority protest.
Thank you. Any discussion? Contender motion?
Move to approve.
Motion second. Call for the vote, please.
Seven yes votes.
That brings us to item 3C, which is report detailing fees to be collected on the tax rolls for refused collection and disposal services in Improvement District Number One, and adoption of a resolution authorizing the collection on the tax roll of refused collection and disposal fees for Improvement District Number One. Staff presentation, please.
Item 3C relates to the Sanitary District's Improvement District Number One. This improvement district is made up of those areas of the city that prior to becoming a subsidiary district of the city in 1997, were formerly in the Midway City Sanitary District. The Midway City Sanitary District collected sanitary service charges by placing them on the tax roll. In order to continue this system for the convenience of the customers and the waste collector, the Sanitary Board of Directors must each year conduct a public hearing, adopt the attached resolution approving the report, and authorizing the collection on the tax roll of disposal and refused collection fees in District Number One. The service charge for the standard residential service in District Number One is $20.22 per month, or $242.64 per year. The total number of parcels that these fees apply to is 5,695, and the total amount to be collected is $1,395,180. A list of the charges has been prepared and filed with the secretary, containing a description of each parcel of the real property receiving services for the refused collection and disposal services in Improvement District Number One, and the proposed charges for each parcel. Staff recommends that the Sanitary District Board of Directors conduct the public hearing, adopt the attached resolution approving the report, and authorizing the collection on the tax roll of disposal and refused collection fees in District Number One by five affirmative votes, and direct staff to file the necessary documentation with the county for the collection of the fees on the property tax bills. This concludes staff's report, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, this is also a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Public hearing is open. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed, and I would ask to receive the report from the Secretary regarding protests received during, received regarding the proposed assessment.
Mr. President, as of the close of the public hearing, the City Clerk's Office has received no protest regarding this assessment. There is not majority protest.
Thank you. Discussion? Entertainer motion?
Move to approve.
Second it.
Motion second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Okay. Item 3D is adoption of a budget resolution. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. President. With this item, staff is asking that you adopt a resolution approving the sanitary district budget, biannual budget for 2017, 18, and fiscal year 2018, 19, as well as setting the fiscal year 2017, 18 appropriations limit. Sanitary district is comprised of two separate entities, the sewer enterprise and solid waste enterprise operations. In terms of budget highlights, both budgets are balanced for both fiscal years. And with regards to the sewer operations, the intention with staff and public works is to continue the planned sewer capital program, both the capital and the structural improvements. They also intend to continue manhole inspections and replacing those that they find deficient over the course of the two years. And with regards to the solid waste, the emphasis will also continue to be on fats, oil, and grease control education to get that away from the system. And there's also continuation of effort towards the waste diversion consistent with AB 939, and the newest program on the radar is implementing the organic waste program for, at this time, for large commercial entities. And with respect to the budgets, we take them one at a time. And looking at the sewer fund, sewer fund is very healthy. We have a healthy beginning balance, and all of that is reserved for doing the structural improvements that I referenced earlier. There's a continuing effort and our staff and consultants are trying to CCTV the pipes, and as they find areas that are deficient, they have sufficient money on hand to replace those. And we will also highlight some of the capital work they are doing later on in the presentation with the citywide capital program. In terms of revenue, the sewer operations generates approximately $9.5 million in revenue every year. Operations and maintenance takes up about $4.6 million. There's contractual services that supports staff effort to the tune of $1.3 million. We do have some outstanding sewer bonds, and the debt service that is associated with that is approximately $1.2 million. And there is also an allocation of $300,000 that the sewer, it will be responsible for in terms of contribution to the enterprise resource program that we are recommending that you approve for staff to implement over the next few years. Capital improvement and capital replacement allocated funds there total approximately $6.4 million, and that's what they intend to use for the fiscal year 2017, 18 towards the capital work that they have outlined. For 1819 is similar. We are projecting revenue of about $10.4, $10.5 million, and the percentages in terms of allocation to operations and maintenance and capital and debt service are similar to 1718. And those are the budget numbers. As you can see, we have significant healthy balances left in both years, and those balances, as I pointed out earlier, are dedicated for future capital work within the sanitary sewer system. And that is with regards to the sewer system. Next is the solid waste. Solid waste is the garbage collection program. We have a contract with Republic that collects garbage for the city, all over the city, and the contract is set up in such a way that the city gets, the sanitary districts get seven three-quarter percent of their gross revenue as franchise fee. And that, based on the calculations or at least the projections that we have, we think the franchise fee would total approximately $2.8 million in fiscal year 1718 and approximately $3 million in fiscal year 1819. The allocations there in terms of uses of the funds, operations, maintenance, about $1.6 million for both years. Contributions to landfill is half a million dollars for each of those years. And we are recommending that we continue to set aside some money that can be used towards the landfill behind the hotels, because that property is owned by the sanitary district. And this is sort of a contingency set aside money that can be used in case, you know, whatever comes up out of that landfill. And similarly, solid waste also will be contributing $200,000 a year towards the enterprise resource program. And with that, the total uses of funds for both years are approximately $2.3 million in each of those years, and we still have about $5.5 million left in 1718 and approximately $6 million in balance in fiscal year 1819. It's a very healthy fund, and with that, I recommend, staff recommends that you adopt the resolution approving the biannual budget for fiscal year 1718 and fiscal year 1819, and also approve the appropriation limit that's presented by staff. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
One question. It seems like we have a very healthy reserve fund. It's around fluctuate between 17 millions and 20 millions, 20 millions. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite get that.
It seems like we have a very wealthy reserve of capital between 17 millions and 20 millions?
For sewer?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that enough or, you know, contingency plan for replacement of sewage?
Yes.
Into the future?
That will, I, that will go a long way. You know, we spend approximately, if you see on that, on the chart there, there's capital replacement of about $1.9 million a year and $4.5 million in capital improvements. So, that's approximately $6.4 million a year. If that continues, I think the balance that we have there will take us for a good number of years. And, you know, I-
Elaborate on what would be your estimate, and I understand only a guess estimate.
Yeah.
But can you give us a range? Five years, 10 years?
Maybe five years, but this is a finance person talking. I will invite the Public Works Director, if he's around, maybe they do have a capital plan that is updated each year. And I'm not sure if somebody would come into, maybe he could better speak to that. But in terms of numbers, the money that we have available here will be sufficient over the next three to five years.
And if we have more than sufficient money in these reserve funds, what can we use this fund for? I understand it's only related to sewage-
Right.
-project, but can you quantify for us?
Well, this money, as you know, is restricted for use within the sewer program. You know, you cannot use it for other purposes outside of the sanitary district. So, it has to be applied within the sanitary district. And at some point, if, you know, I will defer to the Public Works Director to speak to in terms of how much of the public works, how much of the capital program work that he thinks that they can execute over the next few years. And-
It's a pretty small amount. The total capital improvement program for sewer, and this is off the top of my head, I believe, was somewhere in the neighborhood of $34 million over the next five years. Now, there is quite a bit of capacity work that we're trying to take care of. Sometime back, we actually had some sewer spills and things like that, and we had to endure a lawsuit, which caused us to enter into a capacity assurance program and some other requirements with, basically due to the Coast Keeper lawsuit that we were in. So, we are actively replacing a lot of the lines within the city that simply do not meet capacity requirements, along with providing improvements for any projected growth.
With the auxiliary unit that we just adopted, do you project that there might be a lot more sewage would be facing, you know, capacity issue? And if so, how much you think it would, it would impact this reserve fund?
With which, with what that you just approved?
The auxiliary unit, the second-
Oh, the aux unit?
Yes.
You know, we have absolutely no idea how that is going to impact at this time, because theoretically, every single lot, you know, for the most of Garden Grove could entertain in some sort of auxiliary unit. And if we were to reanalyze the entire sewer plan to include all of those units, this fund would not, not begin to come close to covering that. But we don't anticipate mass growth on that. What we do is, we're constantly cleaning the sewer lines. We also measure the flow in them and enter that into our computer program. And as we come up with deficient areas, then we address that with the pipe. And so far, you know, with placing in larger pipe. So far, we're pretty, pretty ahead of the game on that one. We're keeping up with all of our system demands.
I was hearing that we might be considering a small portion of this fund to use to do something with the landfill on Chapman Lee Harbor. How would that, how would that impact this further? Can you comment on that?
Well, the, part of the proposal here is that, well, not sewer, but solid, but solid waste.
Okay.
Sewer doesn't have a direct responsibility for that, even though it's a part of the sanitary district. But that responsibility falls on the sewer, on the solid waste. And that's the next slide. What we're recommending there is that it is a landfill, and we are doing some, you know, mitigation work there right now. And I think Bill can speak to that. But what we are recommending is that we start to set aside some more money in the pot, just in case we have, you know, something, you know, pops up out of that landfill that, you know, that would, you know, enable council and staff to be, to, you know, effectively deal with it, whatever that may be. And that's part of the recommendation for the two-year budget.
Okay.
Mr. President, can I ask a question of the-
Sure. Go ahead.
Public Works Director, since we're talking about sewer, I have a concern for individual, single-family home residents in Garden Grove. You know, we are an old, we're getting a little older, 60 years old, and I have a concern for infrastructure and water, sewer. My concern would be that going forward, single-family homes, I'm not talking about multifamily or businesses, single-family homes, if the sewer was to collapse between our lateral main in this middle of the street and the curb face or the back of the curb at the rest, single-family residents, from what I understand, right now, the homeowner would be liable to replace that pipe if, if they decided to replace their sewer on their own. What I'm concerned with going forward is I'd like to see the city adopt a resolution to have the city pick up those costs if, number one, the homeowner is not requesting just to replace their sewer because they want to, or they're adding, you know, additional square footage on their house. But if the sewer was to collapse between the main lateral and the curb, I think the city should pick up the tab if that, if that sewer fails for no, no reason of their own. In other words, their tree or their property did not cause the sewer to collapse, because I'm concerned about heavy trucks that have been traveling. Our streets have been neglected for many years because of budget constraints. And there's a lot of senior people or third-generation people that lived here, and people are on fixed incomes, and they just cannot afford $20,000 to dig up the sewer from the curb to the lateral. Can you answer a few questions on that and correct me if I'm wrong if, if the homeowners aren't, aren't paying for that?
According to all of our ordinances and everything at this time, they are responsible from the main to the house.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of allocating some sort of funding towards that, we'd, the next time that we take a look at the sewer fund for any sort of an adjustment, we could include that.
Right.
At this particular point, we've been trying to handle those on a case-by-case basis and help out wherever we can.
Okay.
The fund currently has a decent amount of money in it. And to be quite frank, for the last few years or so, we haven't been doing that many sewer projects. We've been concentrating a lot on our water. And with water being down, we have switched that back over to sewer, and I anticipate this fund balance kind of going down at a decent clip here. But we will continue to work with the residents and try to help wherever we can. But at this particular point, we're not legally obligated, nor do we have any sort of allocation whatsoever within our funding to provide for those laterals. In fact, when we did analyze last time for inclusion of the sewer laterals, the amount of capital money needed was equal to the amount of money that we, we needed for the regular capital improvement. So, it resulted in nearly doubling the fee to handle all of the sewer laterals. So, at that point, the council made the decision to restrict it the way that we have. So-
Yeah, my only concern is for, you know, and what I understand, a lot of those, the sewer from the curb to the, to the lateral, or I guess the lateral would be to the house. But, you know, we don't have too many of those just collapsing. It's, a lot of times, it's your own tree or something in your yard that would cause that damage, or something in your sewer from your house that would cause that damage. You're going to be liable for that, I understand. I'm just trying to protect people that, for no reason of their own, you know, it's in the street, the city should own it from there to the curb. If you want to replace your sewer from the rear face of the curb to your house, you can dig down, get a permit, and then replace your sewer from that point on. To make the homeowners responsible, and this is single-family homes, from there and digging up the street and getting a Class A contractor, an engineering firm to come out and do that is just, I, it's, I think it's irresponsible for us to think that those people could do that. Might bankrupt some people. But, and I don't think we have that many cases where that would be the situation. A lot of it's usually a tree or, or something that's gone on with the sewer, so I don't think we would be doing a lot of that. But I think we should look at it going forward.
Well, I echo the same concern that Council member John O'Neil had mentioned. I, in the past, have a few, quite a few residents come to me and asking for, for help. Because, because when that happens, it could cost them anywhere from 10 to 30, $30,000 to fix it, especially the bigger secret, the more expensive it is. And a lot of time, the damage is not caused by them, but caused by a lot of graphics, you know, going on the street that collapse the edge or the pipe. And so, I think it's something that is not fair and it's not right for us to make them pay for it. Also, from an economic perspective, you know, it's, it's much better to spread it around so that it doesn't, you know, hugely impact a particular family. So, I would like to suggest that during a matter from the council, that perhaps, you know, Councilman O'Neil would bring that up, and so we can address that, formally address that, and direct staff to do something about it, and present the, the idea to the city council at a future meetings.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, to Councilman O'Neil and Councilman Bowie on your questions- And, Mr. Mayor, to Councilman O'Neill and Councilman Bowie on your questions, staff would be happy to, as Director Murray indicated, do a little analysis. We could at least give you some information about the number of the type of situations you're talking about, just so we know what they are. And we'd be happy to put together a report and bring that back to you, or to one of the commissions, or whatever council wishes, so we can, we can do that.
May I add something on that? You know, to be quite frank, the amount of times that this occurs is very minimal, maybe once or twice a year. If you will notice, from a council level, for those that have been on the council for a while, a lot of those issues have not come forward to the council. And that's because, as staff, we understand where you're coming from, and what we try to do is to work with the individual, and where there's a need, we will go out and address the sewer laterals. And it's basically on a case-by-case basis. I would put forward to you that what we've been doing in the recent years, since I've been director, is actually working. We don't have, what I see in the future where it would be a problem is if we start getting 20 laterals, 30 laterals, or 40 laterals. And then, then that's going to start to really start to tax our abilities to address. Also, whenever we do do a sewer main replacement, especially in a residential street, we replace the laterals out to the right-of-way. So, you know, a lot of that work is being incorporated into what we're doing right now. So I just wanted to bring that forward to you.
Okay. So you're saying, now going forward, replacing a complete street replacement, you're replacing the laterals?
Yeah, we have always done those.
Okay.
That is whenever we go in with a project and replace the entire, entire main, you know, on a residential area, we'll go ahead and replace the laterals out.
I wasn't aware of that. I mean, I've lived on my street for 40 years, and I don't, I think it's been done. Not that there's nothing wrong with mine, but I've never seen him actually replace the sewer line.
Bill, that, that doesn't make sense to me at all. If you're saying that if we replace, you know, streetwide or streetlong, then you replace the lateral for the resident, and that is where the...
On residential.
Yeah, and that is where the bulk of the cost is. And you also mentioned further that, you know, the situation where the sewage pipe was broken between the curb and the main sewage line doesn't happen that often. Then how come the previous council vote to, you know, take that responsibility away from the city and put that, push that on the residents and owner?
Because we don't, to predict how many laterals will fail in any given year is almost a crystal ball scenario. We don't know. So far, they've been very minimal.
Well, but how would we penalize the residents on something that we suspect, and we don't know? And as you just said...
Because you're asking for all of the laterals to be included in the, in the program, to eventually be replaced.
No, no.
That is a finite number, and that, and that can be attributed a finite cost. And when you do that, the cost almost doubles the rate, as opposed to dealing with it as time goes by and only replacing those that need it.
Right. Well, I appreciate what, we're getting blown out of proportion here. This was basically, to bring it up, mention that, you know, for no fault of their own, a homeowner, that possibly a lateral, one or two, or three, or four, maybe collapsed a year in Garden Grove, that we, as a city, would step up and share the cost and replace it, at least the cost from the, from the main, the lateral from there to the curb. I think what we'll do is bring it up, it matters, we'll direct staff on, to see the past resolution, see where we were before that time, and then we can just look at it. And I didn't want to create any controversy here, I just wanted to bring it up, since we're talking about sewer and cost. That's why I thought I'd bring it up now. Okay? So I think we can move along unless anybody else has something else.
Okay. Any further questions?
Yep.
Okay, this is, this is public hearing, so open the public hearing at this time. We'll be stepping forward, so we'll close the public hearing. Members, any discussion? We're going to entertain a motion.
Move the motion.
Second.
Motion to second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Items for consideration, any? Seeing none, members from the President, board members. So we will recess back to City Council.
And we will take a five-minute break at this time, and then reconvene City Council thereafter. Okay, move on to public hearings. We have a handful, I think these are mostly regarding budget. So 5A.
Item 5A is an adoption of a resolution confirming the Garden Grove Tourism Improvement District Advisory Board Report and levying an assessment for fiscal year 27, 2018. And Mr. Blodgett is here to give the report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Tonight, this is Part Two of the Garden Grove Tourist Improvement District approvals, and tonight, we're here to conduct a public hearing for the levy assessment for the GG Tid and advisory report. So assuming we have no protests here at the public hearing, we'll go forward and approve the resolution confirming the 2017-18 annual report. And staff is here for questions.
Thank you. Any questions to staff? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on the GG Tid budget resolution? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Questions, comments, motion?
Motion to approve a resolution?
Call the vote.
Before you actually vote, I just want to let you know that no protests were received.
Thank you. Call the vote? Are you trying to figure it out?
No.
Reboot.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
5B.
5B, excuse me. 5B is an adoption of a resolution approving the annual levy of fiscal year 2718 for Main Street Assessment District Number One, and Ms. Neal is here to give the agenda report.
Thank you, Mrs. Pomeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, we have the final step in establishing the annual assessment for the Main Street District for fiscal year 17 and 18. The assessment remains the same from the previous year, and expenditures will also remain the same. In accordance with the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, the remaining action for City Council is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution confirming the assessments for the district. All information will be forwarded to the county assessor for collection of the assessments. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions at this time? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing.
I see somebody, he's moving on. Charles.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I served for a couple of years on the Main Street Commission, and one thing that occurred after I had left that really disturbed me, these assessments are on property and business owners on Main Street for improvement and maintenance of Main Street. And that is the whole purpose of these assessments. However, something occurred after I had left the commission. There was a group that came before the commission, asking for a donation for a charitable organization, and it was approved by the commission. I feel that was totally outside of the purview of the commission, because the funds that are raised by the assessment are taken from property owners and business owners. And if there is a donation to be made to a charitable organization, that should be requested from those same property owners and business owners. That money is not there to be distributed at the will of the commission. It is there for the purpose of maintaining Main Street. Thank you.
Charles, we will close the public hearing. Questions, comments, motion?
I just would like, I just would like staff to talk to the Main Street Commission to see what's going on there, and with, you know, whether we need to let them know that. If that is a policy, then either they change the policy or, you know, adhere to the policy.
Mr. Mayor, to Councilman Bowie, we will have, I think Ms. Neal is the secretary to the Main Street Commission, will report back council's concerns to them and get feedback from them on their, on their thinking on that.
And Councilmember Bowie, just for City Council to know, I believe that the commission was approached just once, and actually, it was brought up by one of the commissioners that these funds are just for public improvements, and so they're restricted to those improvements. But I will definitely look into it and also remind the commission of the current policies.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Any other questions or comments? Chione?
Second.
Call the vote.
Before I call the vote, I have to do this. Sorry. Honorable Mayor and City Council members, at this time, I would like to enter into the record the following information. As of 5:30 PM Tuesday, June 27, 2017, the City Clerk's Office received a total of zero protests. Since 5:30 PM, no additional protests were received. There are 30 parcels in the Main Street Assessment. As a result, there has not been a submittal of a majority protest. Okay. A motion?
I make a motion.
We have a motion, a second.
Second. I have second.
Thank you.
Third. 5C.
Item 5C is an adoption of resolutions approving the annual levy of fiscal year 2017-18 assessments for Garden Grove Street Lighting District, Garden Grove Street Lighting District Number 99-1, and Garden Grove Park Maintenance District. And Ms. Neal is here to give the report.
Tonight, the City Council is asked to hold public hearings for the city's street lighting and park maintenance districts, and to adopt resolutions for the collection of assessments for those districts. The public hearings are required by law, and their purpose is to hear testimony on the question of the annual assessments. Once the hearings are complete, the resolutions may be adopted. Should the resolutions pass, the required information will be sent to the county assessor for collection of the assessments. The assessments will raise approximately $1.3 million in streetlight revenue and $700,000 in park maintenance revenue. There are no increases in the assessment rates from the last fiscal year. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions at this time? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on the street lighting district assessment and park maintenance? Seeing none, public hearing closed. Comments, questions? Motion?
Wait.
Move the motion?
Wait, wait.
Oh, yeah. Here we go again.
Honorable Mayor and City Council members, at this time, I would like to enter into the record the following information. As of 5:30 PM Tuesday, June 27, 2017, the City Clerk's Office received a total of zero protests. Since 5:30 PM, no additional protests were received. There are 349 parcels in District 99-1. As a result, there has not been a submittal of a majority protest. There are 35,577 parcels in the city's park maintenance district. As a result, there has not been a submittal of a majority protest. There are 34,966 parcels in the Garden Grove Street Lighting District. As a result, there has not been a submittal of a majority protest, and a total of no votes against adding additional street lighting. Okay?
Now, do we have a motion? And?
Second.
Second.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. 5D.
5D is the adoption of a resolution establishing and amending user fees for various city services. And Ms. Eifert is here to give the report.
Thank you, Mrs. Pomeroy. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, you have before you a resolution amending and establishing user fees for various city services. The master fee schedule combines city fees into one document, and it's periodically updated as needed. All city departments have reviewed the current fees charged, studied the cost of services being provided, and identified fees that should be added or considered for adjustment. The proposed changes are needed to offset newer increased costs to the city, or to provide clarification regarding the description of the fee. This update includes adjustments to community services facility rental fees for the community meeting center, senior center, and corridor center, as well as fee adjustments to fire permit fees, tree planting fees, fees for construction water meter installations, and the addition of animal care service fees. A public hearing is required for the establishment amendment of these fees. If approved, the new fees will become effective July 1st. It is estimated that the proposed fee updates will recover approximately $50,000 annually, depending upon the level of services provided. It is recommended that City Council conduct the public hearing and adopt the attached resolution establishing and amending user fees for various city services. Staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions of Ann at this time? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on the side of user fees? Seeing none, closed public hearing.
No, I don't have to say anything about this. I'm done.
Don't have to do that on this one?
Just with all the...
Don't have to do that on this one? Okay, cool. Motion?
Move the motion.
Second.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
5E is an adoption of resolutions for the fiscal year 2017-18 and the fiscal year 2018-19 proposed budgets. And Ms. Eifert and Mr. Okureke are here to give the report.
So, Mr. Mayor, let me begin with some introductory comments, and to all the members of City Council, in presenting our recommended fiscal year 17-18 and fiscal year 18-19 budget to the City Council. On behalf of the staff, we want to thank you for allowing us to present the budget. With me as part of our presentation today is going to be Mr. Okureke, our Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, and Ann Eifert, who you just heard from. Ann is our budget manager, recently promoted to that position, and doing a great job for us, and this is her first budget. So, we're thankful for her to jump, to jumping in on this and, and doing a great job for us. And I know Mr. Okureke has a number of people on his staff that are here, and he, I think he'll want... want to introduce them a little bit later on. So, we are going to take, I know it's going to take a while, but we are going to take probably an hour and a half or so to go through all of the budget information that we have for you. A lot of what we're going to present today is what you heard in our study session from a couple of weeks ago. Of course, that wasn't televised and for the sake of transparency for our community openness, community involvement, we want to make sure for anybody who's in the audience or watching on TV that they're getting some good information about the status, our financial status, our recommended budget, and they get to hear any of the guidance that you're going to give us related to this budget going forward. So, that's why we want to take some time to go over all this again. Like I said, I know some of you are fairly familiar with some of this, but we want to go through it. So, I'm going to take a little bit of time to go through the big picture overview of where we stand financially and with some of our important budget recommendations that we know people are very interested in. We're going to review the economic environment and our financial profile of the city. We're going to review each one of our operating budgets, one by one. Our budget, basic services, housing authority, sewer, solid waste, water supply, successor agency budgets. I know we've gone through some of those already, but I know that Finance Director is going to touch a little more on each one of those. We're going to talk about some of the supplementary budget measures, additions that we've added to the budget in terms of our recommendations and what some of the necessary measures are going to be for balancing this two-year budget. And then we want to review a few of our key internal service funds. I know there's always, we have discussions about the vehicle maintenance fund, our workers' comp fund, and some other things, and we want to talk about those a little bit for members of the public that are listening to kind of understand those. And for anyone trying to take notes of all this, we'll have all of this on our website, I believe, tomorrow morning, all the information that Finance Director is going to present. So, people can go back and look at it and dig into it and, you know, kind of sort through So, as we prepared to make our recommendations, obviously, we wanted to focus on all of the priorities that you gave to all of us when we, back when we did our retreat as a council and a staff back then. And at the time, you asked us to be focused on financial sustainability of the city. Of course, public safety was very important to the city council, economic development and growth, transparency and community outreach, just as I've talked about, some of our infrastructure and other issues that are obviously very important to all of you and all of us as well. So, we do have a bit of good news that I want to present to the council. Our revenue is performing as we had hoped and projected a year ago, and that's a credit to the good work of our finance department for making good, accurate projections of what our revenue is going to be coming in. And we believe that in the first year of this two-year budget, we'll be able to get through it despite some smaller ongoing deficits, but we think we'll be able to get through it in pretty good shape. Our real concerns will begin in year two, and I'm going to talk a little bit, quite a bit really, about what some of the major challenges that we have on the expenditure side of it going forward. And we'll dig into that a little bit. So, we've submitted an all-funds biennial budget to the council. A two-year budget is what biennial budget means. And for fiscal year 218, it's, our recommendation is for a $244.3 million budget. About 224.9 of that is the operating budget. 19.4 million of it is the capital budget. And there's our base budget, which we talk a lot about, which is where a lot of our challenges are, is about $111.2 million. In fiscal year 19, fiscal year 18-19, the recommended budget is $247.2 million. 230.3 million of that is operating. 16.9 million is for our capital expenditures. And our base budget for that year is recommended to be $116.1 million. And like I said, a lot of that will be posted up on the screen and we'll be going through that in more detail. So, now let's talk a little bit about the general fund. Our projected deficit for the first year of this budget is $5.7 million. And our projected deficit in 18-19 is $8 million. These are increases, if you remember, from last year's budget of $4.2 million. Again, our revenue is performing as we had hoped, but our expenditures keep escalating. There's two main drivers in this recommended two-year budget that are really causing the consternation for us. We have $7 million in expenditures in our unfunded pension liability. We're all reading about it, cities across California. It's wrecking havoc on a lot of people's long-term thinking about, you know, where they're going. And we've included $4 million for our enterprise resource planning system, which our consultant is currently working with us on. And I know, as all of you know, the ERP system, it is what drives all of our finance, our payroll, HR, our budget procurement, and all of our other administrative functions. So, we're going to talk a little more about that ERP system, too. But with that $7 million pension unfunded liability and the $4 million, that's where a lot of our deficit issues are at. So, as I mentioned earlier, in January of this year, CalPERS notified all California cities that they were reducing their discount rate from 7.5% to 7%. And so, their discount rate is what their long-term expected rate of return is for their investments. So, when they reduce that discount rate, that affects cities because it means we have to all pay more to meet our pension obligations for all of our retirees and current employees. And that's been reduced for the next three years. This is going to increase our contribution costs. And so, what does it mean for Garden Grove? So, what it will mean, beginning in this first year of the budget, it's going to be a $2 million increase from our current obligations that we had last year. And then in the second year of our budget, it's going to be a $3 million increase on the top of the $2 million for a $5 million increase. And looking farther out, three and four years out, in the third year, we're going to have to be responsible for a $3 million increase on top of the $5 million for an $8 million increase. And it's $3 million in the fourth year above that $8 million for an $11 million pension obligation that we're going to have. So, as you heard me say before, these are costs that are serious and potentially crippling for a city of our means. These are major obligations that we're looking for and that we're going to have to spend a lot of time, really giving a lot of thought to. It's not a supplemental increase, but the ERP system, the enterprise resource planning system that I talked about in the base budget, it's in the base budget, excuse me, for the first and second year of the budget. We've included $1.5 million in the first year, fiscal year 18, and $2.5 million in fiscal year 2019. And that's a one-time cost, but we currently have a legacy system that is antiquated, to say the least. It's 40 years old. We've been, we've got a great IT staff, as you know, and they've been holding it together, piecing it together over the years, but it's really an outdated system that we have. The auditors have called out the system in our annual audits as one of our risk points. It makes us susceptible to fraud and human error mistakes. It's hard, very hard, to drill down and get the data that you ask for us, the community asks for us. So, it's something that's needed. We have added some supplemental increases to this budget that I want to mention to you and to the members of the public. We have support in the budget for our MetroNet and NorthNet fire support system. That's our joint training facility that we have with the city of Anaheim and the city of Orange. I know Councilman Beard sits on our advisory board for the NorthNet system. We've included $156,000 in new fire turnout gear for our firefighters. We had fallen a little bit out of compliance with replacing that as frequently as we should. We want to make this investment to get us back on track. And in future budgets, you should see a much smaller number of money that we have to spend for turnout gear because our inventory will be updated. And we want to make sure that, of course, as I mentioned in previous, Fire Station Six, the construction of that, West Haven Park was part of last year's budget, but we're certainly going to be tracking that very closely throughout the construction to make sure we stay on budget, on schedule, all of that. And it'll be a great addition to our fire department and for our firefighters. I might add, the first fire station that we built here in Garden Grove, I think, in 50 years. So, really, really, a nice investment in the community. We're going to be, we're recommending, including, let me, just a couple of things. We're recommending adding two additional police officer positions through an application through the federal cops program that would pay for about $83,000 a year for the cost of those two police officers over the next three years. Potential savings of a quarter million dollars to the city's general fund of the next three years. The deadline to submit that grant is July 10th. We're working diligently right now to get that grant in. We think we have a terrific opportunity to get both of those positions funded in the grant program. The chief and the police chief and the finance director, we've even talked with our police union about this. We would expect to hear word on the grant by October, early November at the latest. And the thing that we would like is, we were originally thinking of adding one officer in the first year, one in the second year of the budget, if council wanted to consider that. But if we got this grant funded, it would allow us to advance the filling of both of those positions maybe as early as this October. So, we are going to be submitting that grant as part of that, and we will let council know immediately as soon as we find out whether we've won that grant. For some, like I said, we feel very good about it. For some reason, if the grant isn't funded, the chief and the finance director and I have talked, we will be immediately coming back to council with a supplemental budget agenda item to fill those two positions. And so, we'll keep you up to speed on the progress with that grant, let you know how that's going. Also, from a police standpoint, we're going to be adding 21 tactical vests for our folks that work in those situations, 60 tablets for officers for report writing, the efficiency of that, helping them, get them back on the street where they can get reports filed and then do the police work that we want them to do. We have additional Spillman support training, which is the system that they use to run police operations. And very importantly, in this time and day, our in-video camera, in-video cameras on all of our police cars is really become quite outdated. And in this budget, we have included funding to replace all of those in-camera, in-vehicle cameras for our police officers. It's good for them, it's good for the community, it protects them, it gives transparency to the community, and we think it's going to be an important addition to this budget. We are going to include a relatively small amount of money, $50,000, in an economic development loan pool to help with some of our business centers that might need some help with refreshing facade improvements, cleaning them up, things like that. That's in the budget. We have money, additional money for some street lighting, park maintenance, concrete replacement. Kingsley, in his presentation, is going to talk about some of our capital improvement items that are in the budget. Besides the two police officer positions that we're applying, the grant that we're applying for, the only other position we're recommending in this budget is a creation of a network administrator position in our IT position. This is a person that manages all of our security concerns. Handles all of the risk of major breaches that can occur with systems, IT systems, computer systems. You read about it all the day, every day, where people, you know, hack into your system, shut you down, cause all kinds of problems. So, our network administrator position will focus strictly on the strength of our, keeping our network strong, reliable, safe, all of those sort of things. We have some mandates that are also in the budget that are required either by the county or the state. And then two, lastly, I want to point out two other things that we've included in this budget. One is, we're putting money in this budget for the first time for the CityLink program. CityLink is a program that works with police agencies around Orange County. They interface with the homeless community and they get out there, they help people get, become aware of services that are available to them, work with the homeless community, trying to build that bridge between how they can be helped and, you know, their work with the police department. So, we're going to, we're kicking off a pilot program. They've been fairly successful in other communities, and so the police department in conversations with them, my office, we want to give it a try and we're going to, they're going to provide some resources. And if they're really successful, we'll be coming back to you and to talk about, should we provide additional resources to them. So, the police will kind of be reporting back to us on their work. We've also worked with the animal care community on a program called Trap, Neuter, and Release. We've talked to some of our customers, some of our folks that are really interested in our animal care program and who have advised us of the wisdom of a Trap, Neuter, and Release program for feral cats and other, especially for feral cats, as a smart way to manage some of your animal care issues. And there's a small amount of money to kick that program off, and we've had conversations with our community about that. So, I wanted to mention those. Just a few other things that I want to talk about. It's always difficult to approve any of these supplemental, especially when we've got the deficit mode that I've talked about, but we do have some critical, important needs that I think should not be overlooked, and that's why they're in this budget. Since the recession of '08, '07, '08, '09, we've been drawing down some of our reserves and using one-time sources to balance the budget. And unfortunately, that will continue in some of the recommendations that we're going to be coming to. We're going to be recommending, using some money for the ERP program out of our IT internal service fund. We're going to be recommending the use of some of our workers' comp fund and our liability insurance fund. And Kingsley's going to talk more about that. We may have some last-minute improvements in some of our revenue, sales tax revenue, but as I've said before, it's nothing that we can count on at this point. So, let's talk about, I want to talk a little bit about some of our budget challenges. So, our general fund, our basic service fund is where all of our challenges lie. In our enterprise fund, you heard the finance director said, our sanitary, our sewer funds are in, you know, quite good shape, solid shape. We all know that we have some issues with our water fund, trying to keep that strong and viable. We're doing a water rate study right now, and later on this fall, we'll be coming back to council with a pretty in-depth and comprehensive report on what that's telling us. Our vehicle replacement fund, right now, I've asked the manager of our vehicle replacement fund, they're involved in a fleet replacement fund, they're involved in a fleet management plan to just take a look at all the vehicles we need. Do we have too many? Do we not have enough? We're going to do an audit, we're undergoing an audit of our vehicle usage. So the bottom line is, how do we get a grip on some of these growing expenditures that we've talked about and that we're concerned about? Again, it's primarily related to our unfunded pension liability obligations. We're recommending, as you heard me say earlier, the first year of our budget, we're in relatively good shape. But in the second year, we're recommending a 5% base budget reduction to all of our departments, with the exception of our sworn police and fire complements. So they won't be impacted, at least those positions won't be impacted, but we're going to be asking all of our departments to take a 5% base budget reduction. We're going to be looking at, in the second year, an early retirement program for those employees that might be eligible, and that would, we believe, save us potentially a half a million dollars. Those, going back a step, that 5% base budget reduction, we believe, would help us save $2.8 million. We made some adjustment to our paramedic override tax, which will help us a little bit, but after all of that, we still have another $3.6 million to balance. There's no good choices, really, at this point. Council will, after Kingsley goes through his presentation, you know, we're looking at taking deeper cuts, depleting some of our one-time service funds, trying to find new revenue sources. Those are kind of basically the three options that you need to think about. Year three and beyond, you heard me say that, you know, our obligations, pension obligations are going to be $8 million above our last year's base in year three, and $11 million. So those are, like I said, they're massive increases, and short of some continuing revenue source, or using up funds, or cutting further, three years, two, three years from now, you know, we're going to be coming back to you, talking about, do we need to think about layoffs? Do we need to have hard hiring freezes, furloughs, reductions of any and all other ancillary costs? One of the benefits, I think, of talking about doing this two-year budget is, it allows us to think a little farther down the road. It allows me to better prepare you for what our financial condition is coming down the road, and we can start to think about some of these things. We can be a little more strategic. I want to talk just a little bit about public safety. That's always something that's very important to the community, and people like to know exactly where we're at with that. We have, our fire paramedic runs, they continue to increase. You've heard our fire chief talk about that. We need to keep an eye on that. And our override tax helps a little bit with that, trying to keep current. Staffing for police is always a big question, and we put a lot of thought into that when we're trying to make these recommendations to you of, you know, what should be the appropriate staffing of our police department. We've recommended, you know, applying for two more positions, which would increase our complement of police officers from 166 to 168. I've had lots of people in the community tell me, Scott, we need lots more, we need many more police officers than that. We need to add more police officers. I've also had some people that have said to me, my word, Mr. Manager, how can we add more positions and more police officers when we have a deficit? So, you know, those are the, those are the things that you struggle with in trying to make these decisions. I will tell you that the police chief in our budget deliberations asked for six new positions in the budget. And I agree with him that when he talks about a correlation with Proposition 48 and AB 109, that, that there is some correlation to that and some of the increasing issues that we have in our community all throughout Orange County about some of the, some of the crime that we have in our community. And I've talked to a lot of other city managers and safety personnel, and a lot of people, you know, you know, would probably be in agreement with that. I think in the, in the case of trying to at least add a couple more officers, part of what went into my thinking is, I wanted to send a signal to our police department that while it might not be all the officers that they need or feel that they have requested or want, we're still trying to go in the right direction of trying to build some momentum in our police department, and at least let the community know this is important to us, even though that we've got serious financial issues down the road. This has to be paid attention to, and we think we need to continue to, to try to keep bringing some resources to them. And we've been fairly, fairly successful lately in having officers, excuse me, transfer to Garden Grove from other departments. So I think that's a testament to the work of our chief and our senior officers and everybody in the, in the police department. And I will say that, you know, given the limited resources we have, you all know that, our departments over the years have done a great job, our fire department, our police department, and really across the board here in Garden Grove. We're known for really trying to be, we gotta be scrappy, we gotta work a little harder. We don't have the resources everybody else does, but we get a lot of good stuff done in this community. So we're going to continue with cost recovery wherever we can. We tried to, you know, adjust some fees moderately, minimally, just to keep up with our costs, and we've, you know, we just had a fee schedule on the agenda that was minimal, some small increases, and so we're going to continue to take a look at that. So just in closing, before I turn it over to the finance director, who has a number of things that he's going to go through with us and with the community, I do want to mention the whole reason, this is part of the difficulty that we're looking at, two years, three years, four years down the road. I think this two-year budget is going to allow you to give us better guidance as we prepare, trying to get to some place down the road with our financial planning, our forecasting. It will allow us to increase some of the fiscal prudence that we need to make. I think it'll help us with some of our long-term decision-making. And I want to remind both the council and primarily people watching, even though we're approving a two-year budget, what we will do is come back to, we will be back here at this time next year, and we will be giving council a revenue, an updated revenue forecast, how the revenue is looking, and does that change any of the equations of what we're looking at in the second year of the budget? And if we have to do, we have to make budget updates in that second year, we'll certainly be able to do that. Undoubtedly, there may be some unknown mandates that come our way that we can't anticipate and some other things. And if we're able to have some development things come our way that are helpful on the revenue side, that's a good thing, too. So anyway, with that, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to the finance director to go through the information that he wants, that we need to share with you from his standpoint. So thank you, Mayor, members of council.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Styles. Before I get into it, a couple of things. I just want to recognize my staff, you know, Ann, Ifed, and I have Debbie Powell and Janet Chang. These are the budget staff, and they've been crunching the numbers and working overtime in the last few weeks. And it's special because we have a longtime city manager, I mean, a longtime budget manager here that just retired, and, you know, they've been able to step up and make this night possible, and several other nights that we've had, you know. So I thank them. Just a little bit of, just getting growth financial profile, we are a full-service city, and, you know, you've heard me say that a lot of times. Getting Grove is no longer that dream community. We are sort of a big city in Orange County, and we have the full complement of services, police, fire, all the utilities, community services, housing. We are one of the few that, within Orange County, with their own housing agency. And we have, as of last year, 640 full-time employees, 231 part-time employees. We have one big police station and several fire stations. In terms of population, Getting Grove is about 177,000 folks live here in our fine committee. The police department and others will tell you that population probably is in the, you know, maybe in excess of 200,000, depending on what time of the day. Unemployment here is low, about 4.3, the last time we checked. Location in Orange County, the central location in Orange County is a big plus for Getting Grove, and approximately to the Disney, it's really a plus. Some of the top employers here are hotels and lodging, healthcare, industrial, and big box doors. Credit rating is still A, plus A with a positive outlook, and we'd love it to stay that way. I think the city manager mentioned these numbers. In terms of capital budget, we are, you know, proposing for '17, '18, a total capital budget of $19.4 million. The following year, '18, '19, we're proposing $16.9 million in capital expenditures. In terms of citywide operational budget, for '17, '18, that totals at $224.9 million, and for '18, '19, that's $230.3 million. And I'm going to go into the capital budget first, before we get into the general operating budget presentation. Again, if we take it for '17, '18, I guess I said before, the total allocation and what we're proposing for capital budget is $19.4 million, all-inclusive. That includes general kind of capital projects, as well as water and sewer capital projects. We have, we are proposing an allocation of approximately $7 million for street and traffic improvements. And public works have identified some improvements along Magnolia Street, Westminster Rehabilitation, Twin Tree, Amboro, traffic signal improvements, and there would be several residential street overlay and concrete replacements. So that work is ongoing, you know. Sometimes we focus on the operational side of the budget, but we tend to neglect the capital. And most of this capital funded with gas tax, Measure M2 monies, highway safety improvement grants, and of course, those that are dedicated for water and sewer. And I did present the sewer and budget earlier, it's healthy, and we have some capital work that, going on significant and important capital work that is going on there. There's also money allocated in the proposed budget for park improvements, and we're looking at several improvements at the senior center, where, and I think this involves some fitness equipments that would be installed there. There's, you know, a request to replace some of the gym floor at the Getting Grove Park, new gazebos, CMC, Atlantis, and Feline parks. And we also allocated some money for some light pole replacements at the park. For sewer, again, we touched upon this when we presented the sewer, there's approximately $6.4 million in capital work that is being done, or planned to be done, next year, within the sewer line system. And for water, the total in terms of capital and replacement allocated in this budget as proposed is $5.2 million, and that includes some design and construction of rehabilitation projects with respect to, I think, the West Haven and/or the Magnolia reservoir. And there's also some assessments of the wells, '16, '19, and '25, that is included as part of the capital work for next year. And, you know, there will be also working to replace some of the mains and several gate valves, as they deem necessary. So that's fiscal year '17, '18. In fiscal year '18, '19, the total capital budget there is about $16.9 million. And again, there's approximately $5.1 million that's been proposed and allocated for street and traffic improvements. And some of those identified there, there's work to be done on Chapman, Brokhurst, Larson Avenue. And again, you know, depending on the public works plans, you know, there would be some streets that would be, that would see some new overlay on them in fiscal year '18, '19. And work will also continue with sewer. For the second year, there's approximately $6.5 million in combined capital and ongoing replacement capital work within the program. Water, there's approximately $5.3 million outlined in the proposed fiscal year '18, '19 capital program budget. And with that, I'll turn to the operational side of things. This is really where most of the discussions that we've had in the past in terms of the deficits and the concerns that we have with respect to our financial outlook. Again, in terms of just, you know, the issues, synopses are the issues in a nutshell here. The challenges that we have, it's, you know, trying to strike that balance between service level expectations and what we can afford, and that's a constant issue that we have to deal with. In terms of our financial outlook, I will share some charts in a few minutes, but the bottom line is that we have some growing and budget structural deficit, essentially meaning that our expenses are growing faster than our revenue. And most of that, you know, concerns that we have as a result of some of the funded liability issues related to car purs, retirement changes, and I will, you know, I do have a couple of slides, you know, in a few minutes to show you on that. And, you know, besides the unfunded liability, just the general growth in our expenditures, running a city's a capital-intensive business, it's a, people cost, the majority of the cost. In terms of solutions and strategies that we are looking at, and part of this budget touches upon that, there's some budget costs, cost containment that is being proposed. We are, you know, putting out there some, you know, expectation that there will be some revenue enhancement, whether we explore new revenue opportunities and, you know, and of course, we'll continue economic development and, you know, whatever it brings in, in terms of new revenue to the city. And, you know, we have used internal service funds, but those are one-time sources. And, you know, as the city manager indicated, we may have to deploy that one more time until we can find a sustainable revenue, new revenue source. In terms of revenue, just wanted to focus first on the revenue, and then we go to the expenditure side. For the general purpose fund, we have the top four revenue sources that make up 80% of the revenues that we receive for the entire general fund. And that includes our hotel tax. Hotel tax, TOT, that has become the biggest single source of revenue for us, and it has grown over the years. And that's a lot of kudos to the economic development work that has been done over the years to enable that. Sales tax continues to be a top revenue source for us, in excess of $20 million, and I'll show you the chart in a minute. Property tax is significant. Property tax is one of those most, of all the revenues, I say property tax is the most reliable. Getting Grove is sort of a built-out city, and when other people go through ups and downs in terms of, you know, property changes, we usually don't, you know, we're kind of steady, you know, so it's a steady source of revenue for us. The fourth one is the motor vehicle tax, and those are largely the vehicle license fees and, you know, so. Uh the fourth uh one uh is the motor vehicle tax, and those are largely the vehicle license fees and, you know, um so our um uh um vehicle dealer, you know, folks within Gadding Grove has been doing very well. Other sources of revenues are, you know, through fees, and uh we do get a lot of uh grants and subventions. Um in fact, most of our capital uh expenditures are funded with grants and the M two gas tax money. Um I know this number is uh, I hope you can see it, it's a little bit of tiny numbers. But just wanted to point out, you know, I highlighted the two uh fiscal years that we are looking at, the fiscal years two thousand seventeen eighteen and two thousand uh eighteen nineteen. Those are the proposed budget that is under review tonight and for you to consider and approve. Um sales tax, um for the first uh year, uh two thousand seventeen, it's about twenty, one point nine million dollars, we're expecting. Uh the following year, you know, we think we can make about twenty-two point four. Uh general property tax, uh about fifteen point three million dollars in fif- in seventeen eighteen fiscal year, and about fifteen point eight six in fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen. Paramedic tax, uh we're estimating we'll bring in approximately nine million dollars in the first year and about nine point two million dollars in the second year. Uh motor voli- motor vehicle tax, the next big one there, is um projected to um yield approximately sixteen point six million in two thousand seventeen eighteen and um a little over seventeen million dollars the following year. And if you go towards the middle of the chart there, the transient occupancy tax. As I in, you know, mentioned before, that's the single biggest source of revenue that we now have. Uh we are expecting uh by approximately twenty-five million dollars uh from T O T in fiscal year seventeen eighteen and uh close to twenty-six million dollars uh in fiscal year uh eighteen nineteen. Um so that, those are the major revenue sources that we have. The other stuff, um just, you know, um um a little minor compared to those big four. However, um you look at the bottom, the ones that I've highlighted in green, lightened green, uh our total uh revenue for seven fiscal year seventeen uh uh eighteen is approximately one hundred and nine million dollars. And uh the following year, it's a hundred and eleven point seven million dollars. And if you remember those numbers, because those are the numbers that I will use later in the charts, where we actually show um the revenue and expenditures and uh and the deficits that we are dealing with. And on the expenditure side, uh we are again submitting to you a biennial budget. Um the base load budget includes all the contractual uh inflation adjustment that we know of. It uh includes uh the um adjustments, um you know, uh from car purs and uh all the negotiated salary adjustments that are in place, we've uh included it in the proposed uh budgets. It is um a very strict or stable budget, uh it includes uh some budget cuts in the second year. Uh we do have some supplemental requests, and uh the city manager went through some of those, so I'm not going to, uh I'll get to that in a little bit. But um most of it are mandates and uh critical service um requirements that are um um that, you know, that are necessary to run uh uh operations. And um in fiscal year seventeen eighteen, we are balancing um the budget with the, you know, one-time sources, but we think we, you know, that's doable. Yeah, the second year, um, you know, we are proposing several budget cuts and um, you know, we'll still have some deficit there that we'll talk about some of um strategies to uh uh um adopt a balanced budget tonight. And uh the cost drivers here, you know, just to focus a little bit on uh, you know, what drives the cost? Seventy-five percent of our total budget, uh general fund is uh labor cost. Yeah, and that is uh salaries and benefits, and then the unfunded liability issue that we have been dealing with recently. Um but if you look at that entire budget, seventy-five percent labor, contractual services takes another ten percent. And then you have about eleven percent that um it's, you know, uh dedicated for debt service and uh replacement um uh set-asides, especially in the insurance funds and the vehicle funds. But the big component of it is um uh labor. And um the chart here shows uh the basic services budget uh by um department. And this is your fiscal year proposed uh seventeen eighteen uh budget. And um, you know, looking at the percentages there, um again, you know, there's no surprise here. Your frontline uh um departments, uh you know, have the most budget. Our police is about forty-eight percent, fire twenty-one percent, public works at thirteen percent, and community services about um about four percent uh of the budget. So the total budget being proposed for uh seventeen, uh fiscal year seventeen eighteen is approximately one hundred and fourteen point two million dollars. Um shown differently, again, you know, this kind of highlights, you know, shows it in a pictorial form that salaries and benefits uh takes approximately seventy-five uh percent of the budget. And in terms of numbers, it's about eighty-five point seven million dollars of the one hundred and fourteen uh million dollar budget that we have. And uh if you break down the salaries and benefits, that's seventy-five percent. You can see how that breaks down in, you know, for each of our departments. Uh out of that, seventy-five percent of the budget, that eighty-five, uh forty-five, five point three, or fifty-three percent is police. Uh twenty-three percent, about twenty million dollars is um uh fire. And then public works about seven point eight or nine percent, and community services about uh three point seven. And the rest are the department, community, and economic development is approximately four million dollars. And the rest of the departments, human resources, uh finance, and therefore within uh two percent or less of the total uh salaries. And um for fiscal year seventeen eighteen, uh uh this is a list of uh some of the mandates that were um added to the budget. And I think um the city manager mentioned some of them. Um we are proposing approximately uh thirty-nine thousand dollars for increases in audit fees. Um the Or- Orange County Sheriff Coroner cost increase of about fifty-eight thousand dollars. That's a, you know, uh police fingerprint system and annual fee uh combined of maybe sixty-three million dol- sixty-three thousand dollars, excuse me. And fire turnout, um um gears, um we're proposing um uh it will cost approximately one hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. The rest of it is uh our payments in Nut Net and um uh Metronet, uh fire dispatch services. Uh in addition to the mandate, some of the changes that have um been added into the budget, um we've listed some of them here under public works. Uh there's a total allocation of about two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. And that goes um uh for tree trimming, um some janitorial contract increases at the park, and um some money set aside for A D A evaluation um uh that's well overdue, that we need to do. And um we've also added a network administrator within the I T uh group. Um the enterprise resource uh program for the first year, uh you know, it will, you know, we've allocated at one point five million dollars. And that one point five million dollars is coming out of the um internal service funds, the information technology fund. And those are monies that are, we have uh over the past ten years gradually sucked their way uh to use it for this particular purpose. Um there's um small, you know, uh allocation there of about fifteen thousand dollars for city hall lobby security evaluation and potential remod- remodeling that may be necessary. Uh in finance, uh we have some, about sixty-three hundred dollars allocated for some um accounting academy for our staff. Our staff is changing, and we have a lot of new people in our accounting department. And um um that academy is critical for them to continue to perform their duties here within the city. There is also some um uh about seventy-seven thousand dollars that is allocated to uh adjust some, do some um fire engineer salary adjustments to match up with the paramedics. And um uh within the police departments, uh we're buying some tactical vest and allocating additional ten thousand towards their training, uh tuition and training. And uh within the community development, uh about seventy-five thousand dollars is being proposed to be allocated to the re-imagine Gadding Grove campaign. And uh we also, I think this is the first time that is the, this is being done, um which is great. Uh small business assistance loan, um as uh seed money, we're allocating fifty thousand dollars towards that. So that, it's um all the changes are within the um fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen budget. So if you look at um, you know, uh just balancing the budget, then general purpose revenue uh totals at one hundred and nine point zero eight million dollars. And that's the number that we highlighted in green on that revenue chart, the same number, you know, um there, that's our revenue. And uh there's also a transfer that we normally do about a hundred thousand dollars from our risk management fund that is dedicated towards uh preventive and active risk management within the city. Uh total resources, uh it's about a hundred nine million dollars. Uh base expenditure is about a hundred and ten uh point eight million dollars. So right off the bat, you have a structural deficit of about one point six. If we stopped at this point, you know, really, this is an issue that I, you know, I think um we can handle. So even though it's a structural deficit, but one point six is manageable. But um we have some necessary things that are, that are absolutely necessary that we do every year. Um in terms of the operating factors, we've added um about sixty-three um thousand dollars for equipment and automation stuff. Uh there's about three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars allo- you know, allocated to support cable, um especially, you know, uh to keep, you know, um this council meeting, you know, uh open and viewable by the public. Uh it's open government. And um, you know, general fund is also subsidizing the street lighting uh um uh with about four hundred and eight thousand dollars. Uh C D B G, uh we think may need um about forty thousand dollars in uh, thirty-nine thousand dollars in subsidy. Uh there's also allocations uh for pack maintenance, concrete replacement, economic development. And um the mandates that we talked about totals about three hundred and sixty-six. And the changes that are, we talked about in the previous sheet, that includes um all the recommended changes, including the E R P. All of that total are two point one uh million dollars. So um our total addition is that um uh of those two, four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars plus the three sixty-five, all of that totals um, it brings the deficit that we're dealing with to five point seven million dollars for fiscal year seventeen eighteen. And uh we are proposing to um, you know, with that deficit for seventeen eighteen, we think, um you know, uh we have a a good solution for you. You know, that budget is balanced, and we're balancing it with um several sources. Um, you know, the one, the one point five million is coming from the I T uh fund. As I said, those are monies that we've saved over the years for the I T project, and uh so it's being applied. Um we are recommending that we take about one point three million dollars from the workers' comp fund. If you recall, the previous year, we indicated, uh we proposed to you to to balance the budget for the previous year that uh we'll need to take about one point four million dollars from the workers' comp fund. But what we are projecting right now, we've had a good revenue, increasing revenue coming for last year. So that one point four, we're not going to use it. So we're proposing to carry it forward from sixteen seventeen to seventeen eighteen. So that's the one point three there from workers' comp. And um uh we are proposing um to you to um take additional one point eight from the liability fund. And uh you've approved that increase in paramedic tax, and uh that will yield approximately uh eight hundred thousand dollars that we can apply um for that, you know, uh particular fiscal year seventeen eighteen. And with that, you know, we can have a balanced budget um, you know, for that particular year. I'll pause for a minute, I'll go to the next one. So seventeen eighteen, I think this is the bottom line. You know, we'll have a solution, and we feel good about this solution, we think it's doable. And then the second year eighteen nineteen is where we still have a little bit of a challenge. Unless any questions, I'll move on.
Uh yes, uh if I may, uh you mentioned uh on page fifty, on slide fifty-one.
Yeah.
Uh loan from liability insurance fund, loan from worker comp fund.
Right.
Um how much is, do we have in that fund?
We have um, you have the capo.
I'm sorry, which one?
Liability insurance fund.
Well.
Yeah. I'll, I'll tell you in a minute.
All right. Now, you said that we.
Is there an issue with talking about the number in that fund specifically to break it? Okay.
Hmm? Fine, all right. Yeah, um as of the audited uh financials of uh two thousand, June two thousand sixteen, in the workers' comp fund, we have approximately thirty-eight point six million dollars in the workers' comp fund. And um we have um um most of it, uh we have long-term obligations also, you know, and projected obligations within that fund, but that's a cash balance. That cash balance, you have to look at it in the context of um our self-return retention. You know, we have a one million dollar retention for workers' comp. And when you look at all the liability and potential liability that will occur in the future and all of that stuff, we have an actuarial study that says if you want to maintain um uh um a good program at say ninety-five percent confidence level, you should have uh close to about thirty-five million dollars.
Uh for the liability insurance or for the worker comp?
For the workers' comp.
Okay.
Okay, that's what we have. For the liability fund, as of that date, audited financial, we have about twenty-three point eight million dollars in that fund. And um again, you know, that's cash that we have in that fund that is sitting there against our liability retention. We have a two million dollar retention pay occurrence uh for liability purposes. And every year, every other year for liability, we do an actuarial evaluation that uh we contract uh for. And they'll tell us, depends on how you want to fund it, at ninety percent confidence level, ninety-five percent confidence level, or even seventy percent confidence level, how much you should have in cash. And with that, the last time we we did that, at least, we we have a liability here um that we we can fund it at that close to about eighteen, nineteen million dollars. So when we recommend to draw down some money, it is anything that I would think uh it's reasonable without going below uh the recommended um uh uh confidence level in terms of how you fund your self-insurance program.
Oh, I just want to know, because uh I I think that it's very important that the council have to have the detail and the information.
Yeah.
So that we can make an informed decision. Uh for example, uh you suggest that we would uh take a loan of one point eight million dollar from that fund. So I I think for for me to uh, you know, vote yes or vote no on that line item, I need to understand the uh, you know, the consequence of my decision.
Right.
Perhaps I should not allow uh, you know, you know, the the loan from that fund. Perhaps I could allow a little more loan from it. So those are the informations that I need to have in order to to make a informed uh decision.
Right.
Um can you also add a, I don't know if you are ready now, but if you're not, it's it's okay.
Yeah.
But I would like to um, you know, have the information of the past ten years. If you have, if you have that information, uh how much money would that fund, you know, coming in and out of that fund?
Okay.
Those kind of information allow me to make an informed decision, uh whether we could, you know, borrow more or we should not borrow from it at all. Can you, can you provide that information?
Yeah, we can provide that information, but I do not have it tonight, a ten-year history of it.
That's okay, I I don't expect you to have it, but I I I would like to have those information.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. But I, what I do want to say is that. But what I do want to say is that when we bring a recommendation forward to you, you know, we take some money out of any of the internal service funds, it's based on our informed analysis that we think, you know, and essentially making a statement that we can take this money and it will not jeopardize integrity of the fund. You know, if, you know, so that's our staff.
Yes, yes.
You know, professional opinion to you.
Yes, I think we need that as well. So we need, we need sturdy papers and your recommendations.
Right.
So that we have all of those data to make the decision. Because I don't want to just make a decision and not understanding, you know, why I bought the yes or why I bought no.
Right, understood. And we will provide that information.
Can you provide some clarification as far as drawing from the IT fund savings for the ERP replacement? Are we still going to phase, like, do the first year?
Right.
And this is taking it from what we were going to allocate to year two?
No, well, let me clarify, for the IT, you know, the total cost, it's approximately somewhere in excess of four million dollars. And for general fund, which is the fund that we're looking at, general fund share of it was saying it's approximately three million dollars. One point five in fiscal year seventeen eighteen and one point five in eighteen nineteen. For the very first year seventeen eighteen, we saved some money in the IT fund over the, over several years. And we're saying that we can bring that money forward to fund, to pay for that first year. The second year is still where we don't have a source for. And that's what we can talk about when we get into fiscal year eighteen nineteen.
I just wanted to clarify that we weren't taking money from that and not doing that, so just.
No, no, that's for that purpose.
No, go ahead.
Mr. O'Grady, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, please.
Well, I'm backtracking a few slides, you don't have to go there, you probably have the answers. It's mainly for the benefit of the public. I think I already know the answers. But on the internal services fund and the debt, debt service, it was about thirteen million dollars. Can you tell me what, what portion of that is debt service and which portion is into the funds? Just off the top of your head.
I know you got it in there.
I know you got it in there. I think it was the internal services fund and the debt service was about thirteen, twelve point nine, right?
Councilman John, just for the public and for other council, I think you're referring to slide number forty-five, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Slide number forty-five, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
So just for their, for their benefit, what, what portion of that is debt service and which point is the funds?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, the debt service on that, we have long-term debt service of.
Roughly, I don't need to know exactly, but.
Yeah, actually, show me some runs here. Debt service is approximately one point eight million dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then a couple of other questions, Ron, just to get them before we move on. In your opinion, if California Senate Bill SB one, the gas tax increase is not repealed and the registration, I know it's not a huge figure in our budget, but on the revenue that we receive from that, do you have any idea what percentage that would increase for us?
Yeah, well, we have not factored that into this presentation. And because that particular revenue would be dedicated, it's not something that you can bring into general fund. It will be applied towards public works, you know, streets.
I was trying to get an idea of.
Sidewalk, I don't have a particular number in my head.
Percentage wise, has anybody thought about that? What, if that does go into effect, what?
Yeah, there is a number that we have.
Okay, I don't need it right now, I just wanted to bring that up.
We have a number, it would be significant, actually.
Okay, good, that's what I thought, I thought. Okay, thank you. And then one last thing, for the benefit of the folks at home too, there was the line item where it said, the budget requests. I mean, those are things that we definitely need. And I know all the different departments, is that a total of all the different departments on the budget request of about two million dollars?
Yeah, this is, yeah, from all departments.
Okay, God, I see it now.
Yeah.
Slide forty-eight, so mainly for the folks at home, because they're going to see that under your one slide, it said other, other budget request, two million dollars. So a lot of people go, wow, two million dollars, what is that? So here you're showing it, so.
Yeah, this is all of it, I need, you know, as I mentioned, it includes that at one point, you know, five million dollars in ERP.
Thank you, I just thought I'd ask, I wrote those down, but I thought I'd ask them now while we were asking questions, so I thought I'd ask them.
All right.
Thank you.
So is my turn yet?
Yep, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Let's go back to slide fifty-one. When we have to balance the budget and we had to borrow the loan from the liability insurance and the worker comp, when we talk about the loan, that means we have to return back.
Well, that's the intention, you know, I think that's the ideal. You know, it's up to council also, you know, because again, the point is this, as I mentioned in our study session, when you look at these internal service funds, you know, we have several distinct entities. We have the general city, we have the sanitary district, we have water, sewer, housing. These are all separate and financially independent entities. And they all contribute money into this part.
Okay.
Okay, whether it's, you know, liability insurance fund or the workers' comp fund or the vehicle fund. So general fund contributes the lion's share, of course. You know, general fund has the biggest number of employees or the largest number of employees. So general fund, when we take money from that internal service funds, my sense, financial sense says we have to call it a loan and put it back. But the council can say, you know, consistent with what the councilman was asking earlier, you know, maybe we don't have to. But once you take it, you know you've taken your, part of your share in that, in that fund. Because everybody else, housing, sewer, water, they all have a stake in that fund.
All of these.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're taking.
Yeah.
They all have a stake in that internal service fund.
Yeah. Just so we can be clear, generally, this fund, we should not be using it for different purposes. Especially this fund and the vehicle replacement fund.
Yep.
For example, so that the public can understand.
Right.
Vehicle replacement fund is contributed by many different departments or agency.
Right.
For example, the housing authority, they have their own vehicle.
Right.
So that they can do their works.
Yep.
And that vehicle, that fund to, for the vehicle replacement fund, have a share of housing authority contribution into that fund. And so technically, we are not allowed to take that part of their contribution to use for something else, let's say for public safety, because that's, that's not, that's not appropriate. And so same thing here, liability insurance fund. Many agency contribute to, to this fund for, you know, for liability purposes.
Right.
And so taking that loan from this fund for something else, you know, such as to balance the budget, technically we have to pay back.
Yeah, technically, yes.
Right, because we using it to balance the general expenditure, we have to pay back. But you earlier, you said that it's as a discretion of the city council, it's kind of conflicting. Can you, because in the past, you mentioned that, hey, you cannot take money from, from the fleet. I mean, the vehicle replacement fund and do something else.
Right.
But, but here you say you can take liability, you know, loan from liability fund to balance the budget. And, and even though it's not the right thing to do to, not to repay that loans, but the city council can, you know, can, can, you know.
Let me, let me.
So it's kind of confusing to me, so can you, can you clarify that?
Yes. Let me try to clarify. Technically speaking, you know, yes, you know, when you take money out of that fund, you need to pay back. You know, if we go back to the construct that, you know, several entities pays into it, water, sewer, city, everybody pays into it. If we divide the fund, for instance, you take, you know, the liability fund, which has a balance of about, a cash balance of about maybe twenty-two million dollars, and you divide it up into the various entities, the general fund city may have its allocation of ten million dollars in there. Okay? City council has discretion, you know, with it. City council can say, we don't want this fund anymore, we'll pay as we go, which I would say, I would tell you, that's not recommended. Or city council can say, you know, I don't want ten million in there. Ten million represents ninety, ninety-five percent confidence level funding. I'm comfortable with seventy percent, so I'll, you know, take a little risk and fund it at a lower level. That's your discretion with regards to that allocated portion of it. That's what I'm trying to say. But financial prudence in my recommendation would be, you know, if you take money out of that fund, that we pay back, you know, over time, you know, and make it whole. So I don't know if that explains.
I think that makes sense. But let me also ask you so that I can understand, because, you know, for me, I need to understand the full picture in order to make the best decision. Let, let's just say, you know, we may come to a, you know, crossroad where we may, where we may have to make a very, very hard decision, right? And I'm prepared to make hard decision when I have to. But I want to make it based on informed, you know, I want to make an informed decision and I want to make the decision that are complied by law. So that's why I need to ask you all of these questions and I appreciate it. I know, I know we have, you know, a long night to go, but this is very important to me because I don't want to make the wrong policy decision. Let's just say we need more, you know, sworn officer. And we don't have, we cannot afford to, you know, hire more officer. But we also cannot afford not to hire new officer, because it's a very hard balance that we need to chuckle. And there is a vehicle replacement fund. And if we, you know, after, you have to do a lot of diligent workings, you know, works and analyze this and that, we, you know, and with a consultation from, from the, from our police chief and other, you know, law enforcement experts, we come to the conclusion that, geez, you know, let's say we have a hundred vehicle and we found that, you know, forty of them might need replacement this year. But we might be able to make it with replacing only ten. And the other thirty, we might be able to chuckle and we know that if we keep them, the cost of preparing might be going up a little. But over time, we might be better focused on the immediate need, which, which is, you know, having enough officer to, you know, to deal with the, you know, climbing crimes. So if, if our chief and our law enforcement make that recommendation, can the city council take the part where the money that is contributed to the vehicle replacement are coming from public, you know, safety fund? Like, you know, coming from our police revenue? Can we take that and divert that to take, to handle the needs of law enforcement issue? Now, we're not taking money from other vehicle replacement program, like from housing or from public works, but we take the money from law enforcement for the vehicle replacement fund. Can we do that?
Well, my answer to that would be twofold, you know. First, the answer is, yes, you could do as city council whatever you want. You know, and that's being honest and plain, and I think that's legal. The city attorney will back me up on that. But the issue is this, if you take that portion, let's say, yeah, that's the allocable portion to the general fund, and you take it and pick a number, you take five million and you buy, I don't know how many officers. That's a one-time source. How do you pay for the officer for year two and year three? Once you, once you put it on the budget, you are not going to have the officers for one year and then lay them off. We have to, you know, and the calculation that I've made, and I think I shared with council before, when you look at the net present value of an officer, one officer, you know, you have to think thirty years. You know, that's the typical career of an officer. So, you know, if you, yes, you can do that, but you also have to supplement that or augment that with new revenue going forward to be able to sustain that on an ongoing basis.
Yeah, yeah, I absolutely agree with you, right? We cannot just do a one-time and think that, think that we can, because it's a recurring cost.
It is a recurring cost, yes.
But, but what I would like to know is, because the answer that I have misunderstood is that we cannot touch it. But so, so the question for me to ask would be, is this something that I have this drastic measure? Is that something that I can do now just to, so that I can deal with the emergency? And, and come up with a, you know, of course, when we do that, we have to have a plan to counter, to address the recurring cost when it occurs at the second years or third years or fourth year. But if I cannot do that, if I, let's say if I have a, we collectively together, we can have a plan to address that in years two, years three, years four, but we don't have the money to it in years one, then perhaps it's something that we can, we can consider. That is, is what I want to clearly understand.
Councilman, let me just, to add to your question, the answer is yes. You can take that general fund money if you want to add more police officers. So, you know, it goes back to our budget deliberations when we're trying to put together a recommendation to you. And that's why I wanted to be very clear when I said early on, the police chief, if he, he had asked for six police officers to be added to the budget, if we had money, he could, enough resources, he would probably tell you he could use more than six. And then at the other end of the spectrum, I'm sitting there looking at pension unfunded liabilities and other things, and I'm looking at deficits down the road and I'm saying, I'm trying to bring some, not just pay attention to public safety, but I'm also paying attention to that very important thing that you told me is you want the city to be financially sustainable. So, you know, that's the budget, that's the, that's the drama that you're trying to figure out what to do. But the answer is, yes, we could use, we could draw down a lot of these reserves to add more police officers. We could do that. It would raise the level of our debt and, you know, put us in a situation that, in my opinion, you know, I thought it was a little more financially smart to, you know, there were some people that were saying, we can't afford to add any police officers, we've got a big deficit. Some people, you know, were saying, well, we got to have a lot more police officers. So, you know, what I tried to arrive at is something that as your city manager made a little bit of sense to me. And if you ask me, could we use more police officers? Yes, I think we could. It would be.
Well, I, I, I am not suggest that we go that route or consider going that route right now, going or not going that route right now. I'm asking, you know, policy question. I'm asking, you know, you know, legal question, do we have the authority to do that? And that's what I want to know, because in the past, I was somehow explained that we cannot do that.
Okay, there are some funds that are not general fund that have strings attached. Normally, when they come from the federal government or the state government. These internal service funds are adopted per city policy. City council adopted the policy to self-insure. And the second part of the policy is to, in the self-insurance program, to fund it at a ninety-five percent.
Confidence level.
Confidence level. And when we do actuarial review of the fund, that is what the recommendation is by the outside actuary when they look at it. So what the finance director is saying is that the confidence level, the amount that you will fund it at, you can lower that as a policy and then that basically generates additional funds or frees up additional funds. Problem is, if you have sufficient claims against the fund, you know, lawsuits or claims against the city, you know.
I, I, I think, I got it, I got it. I, that's not why I'm trying to ask, to go when, when I ask this question. I just want to ask whether we can or cannot do and what, and I don't want to go into the argument of whether we should or should not do. Because that's not the purpose of my, of my question. We leave that for a later discussion. So right now, I think my question had been, I'm satisfied with. So right now, I think my, my question had been, uh, I'm satisfied with the answer that you've given me.
Yeah, the councilman, I, I, I understand your question and the answer is yes for that general fund portion of some of those internal service funds. Uh, unless there's some unusual exceptions with federal funds and other things. Yes, that's council's discretion.
I, I clearly understand it.
I think you've answered that question twice now. So I'd like to recommend that we move forward with this presentation and limit our questions while the presentation, presentation is still going to what is being presented. And then we can discuss hypotheticals and what we're gonna do afterwards. Because I don't want to confuse the public nor other council members because now I'm getting confused. So if we can just stay on track, questions pertaining to slides being discussed. Once all the reports are done, then ask questions pertaining to hypothetical situations.
All right. All right, so, um, that's, moving on, that's seventeen eighteen. Um, this is just a summary of it. You know, the next slide, if you just want it in a neat one page, it shows, uh, revenue expenditures and the supplementals and the mandates and the stuff and how we balance the budget. Now, uh, moving on to the next fiscal year, fiscal year eighteen nineteen. Again, we start with this chart, uh, which, uh, you know, uh, it, it shows you the total proposed budget of a hundred and nineteen million dollars and had, how that distributes amongst, um, the departments. Um, the percentages are still the same and, and the essence of this slide is to tell you, I mean, there's nothing, um, uh, unique about Gadding Grove. This is the kind of picture that you will see in a typical city of our size and complexity. Um, you know, with the frontline departments, you know, having the lion's share of the, of the general fund budget. And in our case, uh, as in many cities, it's police, fire, public works, and, uh, community services, which are the frontline departments. And, uh, looking at it again, you know, we say, yeah, running a city is a labor-intensive business. You know, um, uh, labor is about seventy-five percent. You know, those, those percentages are remain the same across two fiscal years. And, um, you know, uh, you can see the allocation of the other stuff, uh, the support functions and internal service funds and all. Um, and if you break down that labor cost, you know, again, no surprise. It's, you know, it allocates to the big, you know, um, frontline departments. That's really where the rubber meets the road in terms of running a city. Um, eh, for fiscal year eighteen nineteen, we have several mandates that we included in the budget. Uh, you will know that there will be an election in two thousand eighteen, so we've included, um, the cost associated with that, you know, which is about eighty thousand dollars. And then, uh, the metro net fire dispatch services and not net fire training, we've estimated the cost increases because we know it's coming. And we think it will be about forty thousand dollars apiece. And we've included that in the, uh, in the budget for a total of mandates of a hundred and sixty point nine thousand dollars. Uh, in terms of the changes, uh, here, um, again, going, uh, through this, uh, public works, we've increased, uh, tree trimming, uh, another fifty thousand dollars for the second year. And, uh, also another fifty thousand dollars allocated to the janitorial contract services at the parks. And, and these are things that I think are really critical needs. Um, and, and that's why the city manager approved them. Uh, the second portion of the, uh, information technology ERP replacement, this is the one point five million for the second year. And this, we don't have any dedicated source from which to fund it. So it's, you know, competing with other resources, uh, within the general fund. Um, and, uh, you know, there's also about thirty thousand dollar allocation for city hall lobby security model. This would take, go over two years. Some money was allocated in first year, this is to finish it up in the second year. And then, um, for finance, there's the annual conference allocation of sixteen hundred dollars. Uh, for police, you know, we are buying some tactical vests. And, um, and we also allocated forty-two thousand dollars to, I think this is the last piece of the tablets that they need. We funded some of them in the previous year. You know, and then, uh, reimagined downtime, we are locating seventy-five thousand dollars to that. So the total, uh, requested, um, and approved changes that are being proposed is about one point seven, seven million dollars in the budget. Now, you look at the budget again in terms of, uh, you know, um, in and out. Uh, total revenue, again, the total resources available is the one hundred and eleven point seven million dollars. That's the same number that we saw at the revenue chart much earlier, you know. And, um, uh, our basic, basic expenditure, it's about one hundred and sixteen million dollars. Your deficit in the second year without doing anything, without having added anything is now, uh, four point two. And that's, the biggest impact there is the unfunded liability allocation of the second year of approximately, uh, uh, three million dollars. And then we go through and highlight all the stuff that, uh, you know, uh, we added, including the mandates and, um, and the, the other budget request of one point seven seven that we saw in the previous slide. And then the normal stuff that we do with the cable support, ongoing, street light subsidy that is ongoing, park maintenance, concrete replacement and, uh, um, allocation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to proactive economic development activities, whatever that may be within the city. Um, that totals about, you know, um, it brings the deficit to the eight point eight million dollars, which is the deficit number that, uh, we're looking at in the, in the, um, second year. In the next slide, we begin to, um, you know, uh, apply some balancing measures. Uh, we put on the table early retirement plan. We think if we do an early retirement, we'll probably, you know, cut cost uh, by approximately half a million dollars. And, uh, we are putting forward a straight-up five percent budget cut excluding public safety. You know, and, uh, if you know, if you exclude public safety in that, you know, um, it will yield you about two point eight million dollars. So everybody else is, except for sworn public safety personnel. And then, uh, we did, you, you've approved, um, I think the second reading it's on tonight for the paramedic tax. That will yield, um, uh, um, another, uh, million dollars, a little over a million dollars that we can apply, uh, here. But that still leaves us with, um, uh, the open question of three point six million dollars. And, um, you know, we can look at that, uh, you know, perhaps additional cuts. Some of, you know, which then will start to really impact services. So we can consider, you know, uh, taking more internal service funds or, you know, uh, look at, uh, revenue enhancements. But this is where we stand as of now, you know, um, uh, for the fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen. And again, this is just, uh, everything summarized on, on one page. The next slide, here I kind of takes a, you know, a five-year outlook, you, you know, go, going out, you know. And, uh, you've seen this slide before, you know, the two years that we're looking at, you know, um, in the proposed budget is, um, fiscal year seventeen eighteen and fiscal year eighteen nineteen. We have a solution that I think is viable for seventeen eighteen. We still have a, a little bit of an open question, you know, um, for, uh, eighteen nineteen. And then, you know, uh, the deficit grows, you know. So, uh, the point of this slide, of course, is that, uh, you can decide to do a one-time, you know, application here to solve, um, eighteen nineteen. But the same thing, you know, uh, for the subsequent years, uh, you're dealing with the same thing. And, uh, pretty soon, we're gonna run out of, uh, one-time sources. And, um, I've just seen, eh, again, the same cost drivers for the second year. The same, you know, there's no change. Um, and, and this is basically the balancing alternatives that we talked about. Uh, um, and, um, we could do additional budget cuts. We can, um, you know, deplete, you know, and then revenue enhancement. And with that, um, I'll go through this summary remarks, but, um, I know there's been some questions, I did add, uh, some slides, uh, beside, you know, uh, after this that deals with, uh, the, you know, retirement and, um, the, um, some of our internal service funds. If I can go through that quickly, uh, for Pers. Um, again, you know, it's a balancing act, you know, for, uh, car Pers retirement. On the one hand, you will have the promised benefit. On the other hand, um, on this side of the scale, you have your contributions that is being made by both the, uh, employees and the city. And, uh, whatever they contribute is invested and the investment return comes into that side of the scale. So that scale needs to be balanced. Once the other side, one side is out of balance, um, good thing happens if we contribute more. You know, you get what you call super fund debt. But in this case, you know, the be- benefit side is way more than, uh, the other side, which is why Pers is asking us to, uh, uh, pulling up some more money. So that scale can be balanced. And, um, uh, the scale here, it's, um, this memo here deals with the funded liability and how they are proposing to fund it over the next few years. And the increases that, um, you know, um, eh, eh, that we're looking at. And, um, we have done the calculations and you've seen the charts, the calculations of, uh, the, the incremental cost is included in both the fiscal year seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen, um, uh, fiscal years. But this is the original memo that we got from Pers that outline what they're doing. And I think there was a managers memo that, um, we sent to you last week that's further outlines that, um, you know, um, what they will be doing in terms of, um, going to build you for the various components of the, uh, uh, retirement contributions. And, uh, just looking at the chart here, you know, applying this formulas that they've sent to us, you know, you can see how, you know, um, our con- total contributions here every year increases. And if you take it out to twenty-four, twenty-five, eh, eh, you know, pretty soon it's, uh, some serious, serious money. And this other chart here, uh, what we've done here is just looking at the Pers contribution as a percentage of total, um, general fund budget. Right now, it's about sixteen percent, the, in the proposed, um, in the current budget, it would be sev- you know, seventeen percent in the fiscal year seventeen eighteen proposed budget and nineteen percent of the total, uh, budget in fiscal year eighteen nineteen. And that percentage grows, yes, if you follow that red line over the years. So this is a major cost driver over the next, uh, five years. And the next, uh, couple of slides, um, it's just focusing on the fleet management. You know, we've talked about this before, you know, uh, it represents investment made to maintain and replace, uh, um, our city fleet, police and fire fleet, water and sewer heavy fleet, they both contributing to it. And, uh, you know, um, uh, you know, general fund, water fund, sewer fund, housing fund. Everybody contributes into it, so everybody has a stake in the balancing there. Uh, uses of the fund is for vehicle maintenance, is for annual maintenance. We have our own vehicle shop with mechanics and everything and all of that is paid out of this fund to maintain those vehicles. Um, and, and, uh, we replace them when they are due to be replaced without having to come to council every time, you know, having them competing, you know, with everything else, uh, on a yearly basis. As I mentioned, um, um, and the bottom part of it is the cash, uh, um, that we have, about twenty-four million dollars, and that's owned by all the contributors into the fund. If you look at our fleet on a cost basis, you know, we have, um, equipments and everything that are, you know, in our system worth about twenty point five million dollars. Replacement cost of most of that, if you were to replace all of them, would probably about twenty-seven million dollars. You know, and that cost is continuing to grow. So, uh, you know, a good example is if you buy a fire truck for, uh, a million dollars today, when you go to replace it in fifteen years or ten or fifteen years, you're probably looking at one point six million dollars. So, um, that's the whole essence of this fund is designed, you know, for this purpose, uh, to replace the vehicles, to maintain and replace them when they're due. Um, and, uh, going back to the question, you know, there's, um, everybody has an allocation here. General fund allocation, can you decide to lower it, increase it, or do whatever? Yes. Um, but so long as it's not the sewer portion or the, uh, or the sanitary district portion or of the fund. Um, you know, so that's, you know, the commingling issue is that you cannot take sewer money to buy police officers or take garbage money to buy police officers. Those are enterprise activity, that legally needs to be separate. You have to make separate decisions for, for those. So I think that's, um, the, the answer to that. And, uh, with that, you know, that, um, really concludes my presentation. And, um, go back to the summary remarks, you know, and maybe we can, uh, answer any questions that you have.
So, Mr. Mayor and members of council, just to, uh, just a couple of quick, very quick points related to all of this. Uh, I think for perspective, uh, you know, I think we were feeling pretty good last year when we were able to reduce the deficit from the prior year from five point nine million down to four point one million. And we were really working hard to kind of keep going in that direction. And it's, you know, it's, uh, i- it's frustrating to say the least, you know, when we get into the lowering of the discount rate and, um, you, you know, but for that reduction in the discount rate and the one-time source for the ERP program, we would continue to be going in the right direction. And we would have had a deficit that would have been greatly reduced from the year before. So, you know, that's where the frustration is for us. We're available for any questions that you have at this point. And, you know, I think one of the, if, if we want to keep going back to page sixty-one, that's where, sixty-one is where it talks about, you know, where we're, the, where our end game is. And so, you know, at this point, we're open for guidance and questions from council.
Mayor, may I?
Please.
Okay. Um, my questions are kind of going back to the vehicle replacement again. I'm just trying to understand or wrap my head around what portion of that is general fund? What portion of that could we use? Um, and also the audit that was discussed. Um, obviously, if we'd had that information tonight, I feel that it would have opened up and maybe answered a lot more questions because, again, I've, I've heard that a fire truck cost three different prices in the last two weeks. I just don't know. I have a hard time, again, as I said, wrapping my head around this fund. Um, and so I, I definitely urge you to get us that audit sooner than later because I would really like to open that up and see what, what's, what's in there and what's, what's going on. Um, but again, um, what portion of that could be ours to use towards this deficit?
Well, the, um, general fund portion, if I can just estimate right now, by having done the detailed analysis of it, if I can estimate out of that, um, you know, cash balance that is in there, general fund portion of it could be half, you know, maybe fifty to sixty percent of that.
Okay.
Um, and that's just the top of my head, uh, given, you know, depend on what year the contributions are going in.
And, um, on, in keeping with, with internal services, um, you mentioned the workers' comp fund. Um, we're at thirty-eight point six. And to keep a ninety-five percent confidence rate, we could potentially maybe take that down to thirty-five million. What are other cities' confidence rate? What does that look like? Do you know, do you have any, like, what, surrounding cities maybe where they're at confidence-wise within their rate?
It would depend on the city. You know, I think city of our size and complexity of our financial profile would probably be higher. You know, wanting to fund this at a highest level and kind of forestall, you know, unnecessary emergencies. Uh, but city that is, uh, very financially affluent, you know, you know, they could have a, a separate contingency fund, you know, with a lot of money in it. And they can decide to say, yeah, we can fund our insurance, self-insurance or, uh, vehicle replacement at seventy-five percent confidence level. And they'll be fine because they have this other part that they can go to. You know, in terms, you know, when they have financial difficulty, they probably have a hundred million dollars in, um, in a, a, a contingency fund that they can draw upon. But, um, we don't have that. So I would, you know, I, I haven't surveyed other cities, you know, but my guess is that cities of similar size and complexity and with the same kind of financial profile as Gadding Grove will be looking to fund their retention, their internal service funds at the best level, if you say hundred percent, you know, to make sure that every time a, a, a police car or, or fire truck comes in for replacement, that you're not struggling. You know, that you can, you know, readily to replace them. That's the goal.
You know, if I, if I may jump into, uh, you know, share some of the info, the information that I have heard, um, and I, I want to scrap that this is just information that I heard. It's not something that, uh, that are concrete fact that have been verified. But, but it, you know, it, it helps to understand, uh... you know, it, it helps to understand, uh, you know, you know, there, there have been a few cities, uh, because they, um, do not have other way, uh, to fund their, you know, their, uh, their cost. So they've been, begin to dip into their reserve fund years after years. And after a few years, after four years, dipping, deep into their reserve fund, they running out of gas reserve and they were forced to bring the matter to the resident to consider an increase in the sale tax. So that is something that we have to, like, I, I agree with our city management that, you know, we have to, you know, be very careful, you know, not to put ourselves, sort of set on the foot by tapping into that year in, year out. Uh, sometime we have to make a, you know, hard decision to tap into it. Uh, it have to be, uh, you know, carefully, uh, planned and, and, uh, and we have to have a plan to, to get out of that. You get a good, cannot just spend recklessly and then dipping into that. But on the other hand, you know, sometime, you know, when we at the, um, you know, point in time where we have to make that drastic decision, uh, then we, we have to do that to save ourselves from collapsing.
And, uh, Councilman Bowie, I would just add and maybe to Councilmember Cloppenstein's uh, comment as well, back when we did our, um, our retreat, we did some benchmarking and one of the things that the GFOA, which is Government Finance Officers Association, has a general recommendation that cities should have about seventeen percent of their operating budget in, in reserves. And when we took a look at that, we were right at seventeen percent. However, which is a good thing, however, i- it's a little deceptive also and Kingsley can maybe jump in, um, they're not true reserves in that they're internal service funds, you know, there are cities that have, as, as Kingsley mentioned, seventy, seventeen percent in emergen- for lack of a better word, your disaster earthquake fund. That's seventeen percent of funds that are sitting there. They're not part of vehicle replacement, they're not workers' comp, they're just emergency funds for that, uh, purpose. Uh, one of the nice things is they're there when you have that incident, but it also gives great confidence to your bond rating agencies. So when they're, you're going out to issue debt for water, sewer, other projects, your bond rating, which is for us is still solid, a solid A rating, remains solid because, you know, they are confident that your city is well-financed, well-managed and is, is sustainable. So, um, yeah, you know, that's one, one way that we kind of look at where we're at.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I think we, we, you know, I, I think we, we are in agreement with that, that this fund have to be considered very carefully. Uh, but, but I think what the council, or at least myself, what I would like to have is, I'd like to understand, you know, all of this fund, what we have. Uh, and also I need to understand what are the best practices so that we can, you know, I can base that and, 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 and base my decision, you know, cap, you know, with the good information. But in addition to that, I think I need to understand the past ten years. For example, if we have ten millions, uh, let, let's just say they use the number ten millions, it's easier to, to, you know, to articulate.
Right.
If we had ten million in the litigation fund and in the past ten years, we only need a million dollar span, you know, uh, from that fund, then it might be, um, you know, a little more risk to assume that perhaps in the next five years, we don't need to tap in more than a million each year. And so that is where I, I think I would appreciate if I have a ten-year history of, of all of this fund, uh, so that I can, you know, I, I can work with city management to come up with a better, uh, suggestion or better decision of how do we get out of this deficit of three point six million or eight million, uh, for the second fiscal years. You know, I, I think it is something that I need your guidance, your expertise, but I also need to look at from a, you know, wider perspective of what our resident would want because in the end, this is our resident that we, that we want to serve. And we want to also base on the expertise of our staff and maybe all the people that we, that would guide us in order to make that decision. And then so that, with that said, I just want to ask you to, you know, provide that information to us and allow us to, you know, work with you to come up with the, the best decision that we can make for our residents.
Please.
Yeah, a question and a comment. Uh, the fleet management program, that's a built-up program, that's a savings, almost like a savings plan for vehicles, correct? How long did it take to build up to twenty-four million dollars substantial time?
Probably thirty years.
Yeah, thirty years. So I want to be clear on that. So this is one-time monies to conceivably help in any budget shortfall that we may have for any of these internal service funds, this is one of them, correct? Okay. Uh, next question you have, uh, related to what the mayor Pro Tim was talking about for more education, more information, we had a budget session, uh, on this and it was, we took no action, but one of the suggestions I had was for our city council to form a subcommittee related to budget, uh, finance, related to the, uh, sustainability and, and the structural deficit. I think I'd like to bring forth that idea again, maybe we could take some action on it. If there's any interest from the council or council members, I think we should look at the sustainability issues, solutions and strategies that we may come up with for revenue enhancement development to meet critical needs. I think we've all identified the critical needs in our, in our retreat. Uh, public's, um, safety was a high on that. So we're at crossroads, we're, we need, we see a need in the increase in that service or staffing levels, at the same token, we see the arrow going down the other way with revenues coming in. So I think if we were to assess a critical review of those needs and then kind of look at it from a subcommittee standpoint to come up with some, um, suggestions, solutions, recommendations, I think we could look at grant funding, I think of other examples that we could have, uh, some of these internal service funds, stress testing to see what is viable to use for, and, and general fund that we can use, not devoted to enterprise funds. So I think if we were to get that group together in concert with adopting this or having a balanced budget going forward for today, at least this fiscal year, identify how we can balance the budget, but try and look at some increases in revenue from that perspective as a subcommittee, as the council. And I would, I would almost like to include the mayor Pro Tim, he has some pointed, good questions related to that and that would be an educational vehicle for him as well and whoever's on the committee. Then we could come back to the council, intera- interaction with the council as well. Maybe get some staff resources, but I think we should take a concerted effort to do that as a council to focus in or else, again, we're here a year from now and we're seeing more deficits and say, I think we should work on solutions. So that's the suggestion I ought to present to the council and see if there's any interest by other council members to do something like that moving forward.
Please.
And something I'd like to add to that too is, you know, going forward, rather than jumping in, borrowing from our reserve funds, you know, I would look first at either reducing or suspending, uh, internal service funds as we go forward to see how that works, you know, instead of borrowing right away and, and depleting funds, you know, you could at least suspend, uh, contributions to that for a short period of time, balance the fu- you know, see how it's going in each fund and, you know, that would be an option too, something like that.
Yeah, I, I agree with that and fiscal austerity is number one, two, cost containment, what we do have control over, that's a key, critical point of that subcommittee, but also the other side of it is trying, we can't grow our way into, well, hopefully we can look at available or potential resources or, um, expanding our revenues, so.
Sure.
Uh, I completely agree. I mean, tapping the reserve is a short sighted, it's not meant to be a bad day. It's, uh, I'll go to sustain for long term and I agree with the council member Chris Beer, to have subcommittee to do the deep dive and look and very, think, think outside the box for solutions where we can tap in certain, uh, sources so that we'll be able to balance the budget for the long run.
So the question I have to the city attorney is, we can only, for a subcommittee, the idea will be three because that's a non-majority council, correct?
Unless you want to have meetings, then it'll be a council meeting. So you, it has to be no more than three council members.
I would suggest that as well, just three, to make it workable and then we report to the full body periodically and we have set times, the scope of work, what we want to do, what we're trying to accomplish, what we're looking at, and ask for staff support to do that going forward.
I, I think, Councilman, if I could just also add, you know, I'm making a lot of notes here about things that you've asked us to spend some time on and, and some of these things are not just quick, two-week turnarounds, uh, you know, as we're taking a look as Councilmember Owen said, you know, really diving deep into what some of these funds are, trying to explain, you know, walk, you know, everybody have a good idea what the breakdown is, what the percentages are. Councilmember Cloppenstein, you talked about the audit and how do we, uh, spend some time really following up on that, what some of our best practices are, reviewing, those could all be things that we could really, as a staff, really apply some resources to your subcommittee and then, not that whoever is not on it wouldn't be involved in it, but that we'd be reporting back to everybody about what's, what's occurred in those, in the work of, of the subcommittee.
Yes, normally, our committees will report to the full council periodically and it will be an agenda side item. It'll be basically report from the committee. So it would be on the agenda, um, for the committee to bring back a report.
So can we make a motion to that or do, should we adopt the budget and then have a secondary action to that?
I mean, it's all related to the budget, so it's really up to the mayor how he wants to handle it. We still have a public hearing to open and hear from the public.
No, I, I, I was just going to say, I still have some questions on some other areas, but I want to make sure we go through this potential subcommittee so that we're not all over the place and trying to...
Then let me, let me touch that just for one second.
Yes, absolutely.
Let me suggest, because there's two kind of central themes, I think, that keep coming up recurring. Um, one has to do with the, a subcommittee to explore revenue options and that kind of stuff. So I think that sounds great and I think let's maybe take that later in the meeting after we get through kind of the general budget thing, because I think that's something that would be ongoing and not just like a temporary fix before. We have to approve a budget, right, um, here, even if it's got Band-Aids on it to get us through. And then thereafter, we got to take a deeper dive into how we're going to increase top line and decrease the bottom line to make us more healthy in the future. So I like that, let's take that, um, separate. The other central theme that came up had to do with, um, reserves and that, just this whole concept. Um, I mean, I'm personally really phobic about tapping into reserve funds to, um, as an excuse to spend more money than we have coming in or that sort of thing, like tapping into reserves there for a reason. What I don't think is that we all have our hands around exactly how much we should have in reserves in each of these pockets. So as a, the second theme that everybody's brought up, I think, is we should probably do a deeper dive into our, all of our reserve funds, maybe have a third party come take a look at it, maybe look at benchmarking compared to what other cities do in terms of percentages and relative to size of the cities and that kind of stuff, it's maybe something we should think about. So let's bring up those two separate items after we get through this later in this same meeting tonight. Talk about a possible reserve...
I think that makes sense.
Like a deep dive reserve analysis study and a, and a subcommittee to explore.
Yeah, that, that's good.
Go ahead.
Um, I wanted to go back to the ERP if we could and talk a little bit about, so in the first year, it's one point five and the second year it's two point five. Um, can we talk about that two point five in the second year? Obviously, I understand, um, the system is, is aging, um, but I just kind of want to look at, at that second year, city manager, if we could.
Yes, council member. Um, so it's kind of, uh, we've envisioned it as kind of a two-phase, um, project that involves, you know, the original kickoff of the program, uh, the original pieces that involves our payroll and the basic, um, purchasing modules that go along with it. And then, um, the second phase of it in the second year sort of expands on it, so we include, uh, all the departments that are included in it. Um, I don't know if Kingsley, you want to talk a little more about it or certainly, uh, Charles Colill, who's, uh, could come in here to answer some of the questions about it too?
Yeah, I can talk, um, in terms of, um, you know, for the second year, the two point five million dollars. Out of the two point five, we've included a one point five million dollars for the general fund, which is the one point five in the second year. What we are also proposing, and I, I think I pointed that out in, when we looked at the sanitary district, we are locating, uh, three hundred thousand to the sewer because they also benefit from the system and, uh, two hundred thousand to the, uh, um, solid waste. Yeah, so that brings it out to, to, um, uh, two million. And then half a million dollars to water because most of the systems also, water will have a, is a heavy user of, um, that system because it will connect with the billing system and all of that stuff. So what we're hoping, the strategy here for that second year is that general fund is on the hook for one point five, uh, sewer is on the hook for three hundred thousand, solid waste for two hundred thousand and water for half a million, uh, for that second year. The first year, uh, we did not, uh, water finances are kind of tied, so we did not allocate any share to the water in seventeen, eighteen. So, but that second year, water gets, um, uh, a share of half a million dollars in it. So that's how we are proposing to raise the entire, um, um, two point five for that second year.
So that's, that's the financing of it. Charles, could you just take, very briefly, just talk about the two phases very quickly, what it entails and, um...
Certainly. The, um, the first year, we would be doing the, like, the general ledger, it would also be, uh, the purchasing aspect, it would be budget, um, that's what the, which is basically the guts of your, your financial system. The second year would be expanded into both payroll and the HR element of benefits, uh, which is, um, a, a little bit bigger of a project, what, um, in some respects, but they're both huge projects, it's just, uh, one's a little bit more time consuming and I think that's why you'll see the, the difference in, in, in the costs.
Uh, Charles, can you, uh, elaborate the, so the first year, we are doing the general ledger budget and, uh, acquisition, right?
Yes, I mean, chart of accounts, general ledger, accounts payable, accounts receivable, all, pretty much most of, of, of what, um, every, um, department is using and the, the second year would be focused primarily on payroll and benefits.
Payroll and benefit, okay. You mentioned, okay. Um, so, so for my council, uh, in term of, uh, you know, technology, uh, this system are, uh, modulized, so it is possible to implement, uh, certain subsystem and, and without, without having to do the other. For example, uh, general ledger budget and purchase can be implemented separately from payroll and, uh, and, and benefit.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, payroll and benefits are really fairly symbiotic, they almost need to go together, but the other ones, typically, you need to start with the, the, the general ledger, I think, you know, chart of accounts, that's really the, the guts of it, you need to start with that. And then, um, I believe in most of the, the modern systems that we're looking at, the budget and the acquisitions or purchasing are kind of tied in together with those, but, um, I couldn't tell you for sure whether they could be separated, but they typically come all in one, maybe Kingsley knows more about that than I do, but...
No, I think you're correct. Uh, it does come, uh, as one and, um, at least that first year, the gut of the system, the GL, uh, and, and purchasing can be implemented.
And, and, and the reason that, uh, that we found that it is, uh, you know, urgent to implement this now or implement it sooner than later is because the system is based on the big operating system that is about thirty years old at least and, uh, it is no longer supported. Uh, we are lucky because, uh, a couple of our staff, uh, have been working on it and then, and so they are familiar with it. Uh, but let's say if they, you know, are going to leave our city, it would be extremely difficult to, to get an expert, uh, you know, programmer or, or, or system administrator to, to maintain it. It's, 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 it's almost impossible. Uh, not to mention that if something happened to that hardware, we are doomed because there's no, we cannot go out there and buy a replacement hardware to...
Well, in this, in the hardware case, we're fortunate because it's been moved to more modern hardware, it's, it's virtualized now, but you're absolutely correct on the other aspect of that. This is no different than in the Y2K when you're looking for COBOL programmers. Um, you really, it's, we have people that have years of institutional knowledge here that have been working on the system. that have been working on the system. Should we have people leave, it would be really difficult to find the people with the skill set to be able to go and read the code, and even if you found them, they would be working for years to try to understand what was built over the last 40 years.
So that is why I've, you know, with my IT expert, I felt that it is prudent that we not stopping this project. Now, as we, you know, as a subcommittee look at this, if we feel that, you know, we might be able to wait on the second, you know, years, then, then we will, we will make that recommendation and let the decision, you know, let the council know about it and see whether we, we could afford to wait another years, delay another years. But, but that is something that we have to, you know, work with, let IT people work and, and figure that and make a recommendation, the access and recommendation to our city at a later time, whether we can delay the second years.
Yeah, I think that's where I was headed. I was trying to somehow formulate the idea. It wasn't so much about what the program does, it was about that second year and the costs, and how we could maybe suspend some of that or not spend the 2.5 in the second year, and what that would look like. That's kind of where I was headed with that question, so whether that's for you, Mr. Manager, or for Kingsley.
Quickly.
I can take a...
Quickly. We had this discussion prior to, but, but I forget the exact breakdown. In the second year, the 2.5 comes from where, which, what's the breakdown of which funds that that actually comes from?
The general fund.
General fund versus other funds?
1.5 comes out of general fund, half a million dollars from water, 300,000 from sewer, and 200,000 from solid waste. And just going forward, if the question is, you know, and Charles can chime in, but if the question is, the 1.5 allocable to general fund, can that be delayed? You know, without jeopardizing the implementation? I would say, yeah, you know, we could do that, but Charles, I mean...
I think there's two, two risk factors. One is the cost of 2.5 million was probably, would be set based on going forward at that time. Should we delay it, they probably wouldn't be, they would not be held accountable to holding that cost, so the cost could go up. And two, we would be maintaining two systems. We would have a modern accounting system, and we would still have the antiquated payroll system. They would, IT would have to hold them together for an extra year, but you would also, whatever liabilities that the auditors found in the general accounting system would still exist in our payroll and our benefit system.
Okay. Again, I'm not, I'm not trying to say that that's, that is the end-all, be-all answer or take away the validity of this need. I'm just trying to look for options and start asking some questions to get some dialogue and better understanding for myself.
No, and Councilmember, your, your question is exactly right, because, and that's why I wanted to just have Charles explain the, the two phases. And so we kind of understood how they, they work together, but they are different. And, you know, if you could start on one, I don't know, it would be tricky for them, I'm guessing, to split the second year in half. I'm guessing they could probably get started on some form of it, fashion of it, continue with the, with the consultants on what we're doing, but it would certainly be tricky, and it wouldn't be the ideal way, probably, to do it.
Well, I, I believe that it is something that we obligate to advise the city council, and then let the city council make the decision. So it is my intention to work very closely with IT to scrutinize it and see, and evaluate the risk, assess it and evaluate the risk, and present it to the city council, so they can make the decision. And I would lean toward continuing with that project, but I want to, you know, provide the information to the city council as much as we can, and then let the council decide.
And just to remind all council members, Councilman Bowie did, I guess volunteer, was appointed as the IT subperson of one to our, for our IT needs. We actually spent a good bit of time with him, him this week. He's, Councilman's got a lot of background in IT systems, and we spent a lot of time with him this week just talking about the actual RFP and what goes into it and, and all of that. So we'll, we'll continue to do that with him as your representative on that committee.
I had a quick question regarding, I know that this change is coming about from an audit where we found a weakness in our system. Question, did the audit say that we had to do something? Or is this a self-imposed?
I think Kingsley would be better to answer that.
No, the, the audit, what it does, you know, financial audit, they will point out some of your risk exposures. It's up to you to change them.
Side, okay.
You know, but they're not going to say, you know...
By this time, you have to do...
You have to, but, you know, every year for the past, I would say, eight years, they've pointed out that you have a system that is antiquated, and it's hard to drill down, and the concern is if something goes wrong. And I think Councilmember Bowie pointed out, you know, some of these systems, you don't have replacement parts, you don't have, it's too person-dependent. You know, if we lose a couple of people within the IT staff and my staff, we don't have that, you know, capacity to just, you know, get in and produce financial statements. I hate to come here and tell you I cannot produce financial statements for a particular year. So when auditors give you that kind of information, is beware. So it's up to you to make that sound decision to say, I think it's time.
I, I was just asking for clarification. I mean, I'm in favor of keeping this project moving as scheduled, just because I'd rather, I think that there's too much of a risk to not do it in the way that is being recommended, so I'd like to see a solution found somewhere else, although I know we don't really have any more solutions.
I would not necessarily jump into that conclusion, Councilman Kim. We, we have many moving parts. So it is, we cannot keep them all. So I think the, the city managements and the city council need to assess the situation, assess all the puzzle, and then make the, the best informed decisions. You know, if, if we say that is a huge risk, it is a huge risk, but also we have many other issues that we have to, to address. We have crime that are going on at, you know, unsustainable. If we do, you know, every weeks, we have homicides, we have robberies, even, you know, gun robberies in our city. Every weeks, I have residents calling me, and they are very nervous. Now, if, if crime is getting out of control, developer may not come to our city, our resident may go to other place. So it's, it's also a huge risk. So I think it's very important for you and all the council to wait and see what we can do. So I think, I think, you know, I trust our IT staff and I trust our city management. So we will work very diligently to come up with a risk assessment and provide to the city, and then we can make the decision, because obviously, we have $8 million deficit by year two. Where do we get the money? Right, we may, we may, the, the subcommittee may be able to come up with a, with a solution to endow the deficit, but we may not. So then we will have to make a hard decision, where do we cut? So I think, I think we should not rush into any decision one way or the other. I'm, like I said, I'm leaning toward keeping the, the two phases on time, but I would not make that decision until I do a full assessment and present that assessment and the risk to the city, so that we can make the best, you know, informed decision.
Here, let me bring up one thing. So I agree with what you're saying. I think this is a very important program, the ERP. The, the cost of not doing it and doing it together, I think you've got it set up good to do it in the two-year plan. You know, the worst-case scenario, if something does go wrong, the manpower time and the lost information would cost $4 million. So I mean, I think we need to stay on track with this program, and we'll find the money, and we'll, I'm very optimistic that we're gonna be fine. If you pull out the CalPERS situation, you know, we're in great shape. So we need to overcome that, and we're not the only, we're not Little Garden Grove here having to deal with the whole state's CalPERS situation, but we do have to make our obligated payments. So everybody's dealing with this right now. So I'm very optimistic that we're all together, we're gonna work on this, and we're gonna get it figured out, we're gonna pass a two-year budget tonight, and into the next year, we're gonna have a lot of great ideas going forward for year two and the third year going forward from that. That's where I'm at right now.
My two cents worth on the ERP is just, it's such a big glaring number, $4 million bucks in light of just where we're at with structural deficits and that kind of stuff, that if there's a way we can focus on spending the monies that are coming from the healthy funds in year two and maybe holding back a reserve in the parts that's coming from the general fund, so maybe give that thing a 1.5 million dollar pause in year two, or defer, or something like that, stretch it out. So I think that would just be prudent. I mean, in the grand scheme of things, we've got, you know, the boat is leaking in 10 different places, and we're trying to replace the computer, or something, you know what I mean? So it's, I realize it's really, really old, and I'm not trying to kill the program and that kind of stuff, but that's just kind of one that sort of stands out glaringly as a really big number in light of, it's 4% of our top-line budget we're talking about spending over a two-year period.
Yeah, and then, I'm sorry, was there a question or... No, I, I think, I don't know that is a question, but let's, you know, and, you know, from my point of view, I think getting the core system in the first year, and we have money set for it in the first year, 1.5, and we have additional resources coming from some of the enterprise funds, who will also benefit from this system, contributing in the second year. I don't think it would be the worst thing to delay the general fund 1.5 contribution. I, I don't think, unless, you know, you think differently, but I think if, you know, delaying it would not be the end of it.
Are we talking about just delaying the funding or delaying the project?
No, no, delaying the funding, because what I'm, what I'm saying here to council is that we have 1.5 million dollars in the first year, which is, you know, hopefully, that's done, because we saved over so many years for that 1.5. We also have some of our enterprise activities that benefit from it, so solid waste and water contributing some money. So for the following year, the next, second year, the only thing that will be short will be that 1.5 million dollar component. If that is delayed for one more year, I don't think it will be the end of the world for that. The project will still progress, it may, you know, and I think Charles pointed this out earlier, because, you know, we may not be able to hold folks to a certain price quarter, a certain number of, you know, for a number of months. You may increase the cost, I don't know, 5%, you know, or some, some additional cost.
It's likely to be increased. It's no question about it. If we delay it, it will be increased. So it's just a matter of increase by how much.
Yeah, I defer to your expertise. I know you've been through this a lot.
Now, so, but I, what I don't understand, Kingsley, is what do you mean by defer and getting the money from the ERP? Where's that money coming from?
Well, I'm going on the assumption that, from your discussion here, if you have a subcommittee formed, and there's, you know, discussions and results from it, you know, that, you know, maybe we have some new strategies or some new revenue opportunities to, that year three, that we may have the capacity to reinstate that 1.5 and finish out the project.
We, like, like I mentioned, we, we work with our IT and management to explore that, identify all the risks, and, you know, what, what else can we do? Because I, I don't want to rush us into, you know, turn left or turn right or keep the same pace. I want to study it, and then we will present all the facts to the city council, so we, together, we, we'll try to make the best decision, whether we stay on course, turn left, or turn right.
I think, it, it sounds like what we're trying to figure out, and maybe what would be helpful to us, is for council to, you know, we're trying to figure out what our placeholder is gonna be to, for that...
Yeah, my recommendation to...
Piece of it.
Yeah, my recommendation to the council would be, we tentatively approve the project with the understanding that there's a couple, you know, items that we may come back to, you know, make some, some minor change to it, as it makes sense, because obviously, we have $8 million deficit in the second years. The first year, we are not too worried about it, right? But the second, we have $8 million deficit, and so we need to come up with a, with a, you know, solution to address them, whether we cut costs or we borrow money or whatever, or how do we get more revenue to support that? So that is something that I, that I, you know, don't think we can answer today, and we need to pass a budget so that we do not hold up our operation. There's one thing that I'm very concerned about, and I want to take this opportunity before we continue, is the public safety. Now, I do understand that we cannot spend the money we don't have. We cannot afford to add more police officers. But the matter of the fact is, we also need to end, to, to answer the question, can we afford not to add more officer? It is, is as equally a question, important question that we need to answer. And I am afraid that the answer is no. We cannot afford not to add more officer. Why? According to the Federal Bureau of, you know, Public Safety, according to the National Police Association, for every 1,000 resident for the city of our side, we should have 1.9 officer. Wait a minute, I'm, yeah, that's correct, 1.9 officer. So that means for a city of 180,000 people, we need 342 sworn officer, and right now, we have only 166, way, way below. Now, if we take, if I say that, well, that's an ideal ratio, perhaps we cannot, no one can afford 1.9 officer per 1,000 resident. Let's take it all the way down to one and a half. That means we need to have 270 officer, and we only have 166. If we take it to one officer, which is half of what recommended by the Federal Bureau of Public Safety, we still need to have 180 sworn officer. We are below that, that half point by 14 officer. So how do we catch up? With, with crime is everywhere in our city. If you talk to people in West Garden Grove, they're very alarmed about this. If, just a couple of weeks ago, we have a homicide on the, in District 6. The same week, we have a stabbing at 7-Eleven on Garden Grove Boulevard, at the 7-Eleven at Garden Grove Boulevard and Nelson. We have, the same week, we have robbery in, you know, on Brookhurst and Westminster Boulevard behind the 99 Cent store. And that's just, just to name a few. You know, the statistic is, is a lot higher than that. So we are adding a lot more residents at an alarming rate, right? We're adding a few hundred apartment on Brookhurst Triangle, we're adding jamboree housing, we're adding a lot high-density, and we are dealing with a, you know, runaway homeless issue that put a tremendous, you know, demand on our, you know, police department. So I, I don't think, we just can't just simply pop the question, can we afford to hire more officer? We have to also answer the, the, the different question. Can we afford not to hire more officer? Two officer for the next two years, one each year, is simply just a drop in the ocean. We cannot, we cannot do that. So if, if everyone, and I, I saw all of your flyer mailers when you run for office, you tell all our residents that public safety is your number-one priority. Do that. So I, I think it's very important, and I don't have a solution, but I, I would like to ask our, challenge our city management, challenge our... to ask our, challenge our city management, challenge our city council, that in the next two years, we need to add at least six more officer. Figure out where to do that. Otherwise, you are not delivering your promise to the resident when you run for office. I don't, I don't want to buy the, 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 the argument that, hey, we don't have the money to hire more officer. That's not, that's not responsible to our resident.
I definitely don't need to be told.
I think we just found a chair of the subcommittee. I'm sorry, you're the chair of the subcommittee.
No, no.
I don't think any of us need to be told that we need more police officers. That is very evident, and as you pointed out, yes, there was a homicide in District Six, which was less than a mile from my house. My parents' house was just attempted to, uh, attempted burglary last week. You don't need to tell me that I live in the most probably dangerous district in Garden Grove. I don't need to be told that, but we don't have the money. And this conversation is derailing what we need to do tonight, which is pass a budget. So, let's, I would suggest that we get back on track and do that. The subcommittee that will be hopefully voted on and created after tonight can discuss how in the world we'll pay for more police officers.
Well said, I would agree. I think that the core issue here, year two, we've got an eight million dollar structural budget deficit through various cost-saving measures that were described to us in the previous budget review session. We could sort of whittle that down to a three and a half million dollar deficit, and we've gotta figure out how to resolve that. I think we potentially just picked up 1.5 million on deferring year two of the general fund expenditure of the ERP system. That leaves us with two, which will probably come out of reserves. Anybody like to add on to that, or can we move forward towards getting where I think we're naturally going?
I would like to add one more thing. Now, when we don't have money, we have to start, uh, cutting on things that are not critically needed. So, I see, even though it's a small item, but we, but, uh, every dollar saved adds up. And so during this, uh, you know, drastic, uh, difficult times, I think we need to tighten the belt. And with that, I would like to, uh, propose that we might consider, and I say might consider because I don't want to force it on, uh, on tonight, that we would not spend the money on the Open Street. And I know it's a very important programs. The resident love it. I like it a lot. I want it to continue, but at least for now, I think if we try to see if we can get the business community to, to donate the money to do that, then we continue. If we cannot get the, uh, the business committee to donate that, that, that amount, then I think we need to put it on pause for a couple of years. The first year we save 75,000, second year we save another 75,000, that's 150,000 that we, would allow us to apply to the second year's deficit. So, instead of, we start, we also need to look at the first year fiscal year to see where we can cut, because the money that we save will help us to be in surplus for the first year instead of, you know, balance out, and then use that to balance out the deficit for the second years. Uh, that is something that I would like to, uh, if I pass this budget tonight, I would like to make the note that we want to explore area where we can cut, and, and that would be allow, at least allow me to have an opportunity to at least amend this project as, as needed.
I understand that that seems like a lot of money over the course of a couple of years, and we, you're right, hard cuts are needed and we're gonna have to get creative and think outside the box when it comes to saving, um, but I also know what that particular event has brought to the city and the economic development opportunity that it's brought to the city, and we need to look at ways to increase our revenue, uh, and we're starting to see that happen with some of the projects that are currently coming, and I think that we know that Open Streets was, was a part of that vision. So, I, I think we need to tread lightly with potentially, um, discontinuing that from, from the budget going forward. Um, it's just a, a thought.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Please.
Have we had the public hearing on this? I missed it if you did.
No.
Okay. We're just asking questions.
Correct. We're still, yeah. We're not deliberating yet, we're just opining largely. Should we go ahead and open a public hearing? Is there anyone wishing to speak on the budget? Is there anyone still awake? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Thanks for bringing that up and getting that procedural matter back on track.
Did you have any more questions to make?
I don't.
Thank you, Charlie.
And I, I would like to reiterate what Kim said about how we, we all know the desire and the need for more police in the city, and I don't think, I think all of us are willing to go on record as saying that that's important to us, and that's something that we're constantly thinking about. We know that crime is up, we know that it's an issue, 166 officers, now potentially 168 is still not acceptable, um, but it's definitely something to continue to look at and, and work on, and I know for myself, it's, it's very important to me, and a driver for me going forward.
I just wanted to add to that as well. As a resident of Garden Grove, we all care for Garden Grove. We care for our neighbors, neighborhoods, safety issues. We agree that, and we don't have to be reminded so many times that we need more police officer. That's one thing, that's our job. We know for the fact, but we need to be taken to conscientiously that money in, money out, gotta be balanced, period, and sustainability for long-term, not just, let's survive this year and then we worry for next year. That's not our intention. Our intention is look further out, look outside the box, and I think the subcommittee, if we put all our thought in from different background, we're gonna analyze the situation better, come up with ideas, and we deep dive into the situation where we can find a solution for it.
Well, I will, uh, add to the council members that the city staff, we are, stand ready to really devote a lot of time and attention in this coming year, working if the council does create a subcommittee to look at both revenue and, and cost and, and, uh, you know, the, uh, the, the, the levels of policing we should have in this city could also be part of that discussion, you know, where does public safety fall into that and what can we, it is, Councilman, I think Bowie asked a question, what can we afford, what can we not afford to do? And so, that could, it could be a, a clear part of the task of this group. And it would be, it would be helpful from our standpoint, cause it would just continue to clarify for us what the wishes of, of council were, so.
And I think we all wanna be actively involved in that process. Obviously, from a subcommittee, there could only be three, and that's sort of the difficulty is how do you narrow it down, but it probably makes sense for a subcommittee to do it, to move that item along more expeditiously than having to agendize and notice a bunch of public meetings with all of us, so.
I have a question. I know we open and close really quick, but, so, is this saying if this budget passes now, that there will be no officer hiring in two years? Just the two that we have? There will be no, no other discussion about it? That's a question.
It's complicated, so I don't think it's that simple, and I don't think that's what, um...
I mean, is it a closed door at that point?
It's not a closed door by any means, no. It's, we've gotta get through the approval of a budget before the end of June, that's, that's a, that's a two-year look this time for the benefit of saying, look, guys, if, if we just did a one-year, we could sort of make it pretty it up and look okay, but if you look out to year two, three, four, it gets really scary primarily because of this CalPERS change, right? That just adds, I mean, several million dollars to our...
Seven point nine to seven percent.
Exactly. It's, it's scary, right? So, um, with that factored in, that's what changes, I think that's what creates the driver for this subcommittee to explore revenues, whatever that means.
I sent my comments in, but I really think that two officers in two years is a, a stretch for the different visitors that we're asking for, the businesses that we're bringing in, and the, the residents, so.
I think we're, I think we're all well aware of that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it's a, but just, um, there's grant money available that we're trying to pursue that has a timeline between now and October. I think that's first and foremost, we focus on that out of need, we try and secure that. We talk about any other options that come up as a result of the subcommittee recommendations.
As long as we know that it's not just two years, two and two, two officers. Thank you.
Thanks.
One of the, to the speaker, one of the things that we talked about, uh, earlier is that by applying for this grant money, we think we might be able to advance at least two of those officers immediately, as soon as we find out we receive the grant.
So, kind of the primary issue at hand is, is approving the budget, right? And I think we've got year one pinned down, um, year two is up in the air to the tune of an eight million dollar structural budget deficit with some built-in provisions that could get that narrowed down to 3.5. We've discussed a cutback in the second year expenditure from the general fund of the ERP program that gets us down to about two, and at least we've narrowed the amount of money that we're touching out of any reserve funds or that, um, so, I think with that, then we move on to exploration of a subcommittee and exploration of, um, deeper dive into our reserve policy and our, um, the amount of reserves and percentages of, of reserves in each fund, and we kind of explore those things after approval of...
Well, and Mr. Mayor, I think we understand, you know, if council needed to say that there was a placeholder for one of, as you sort of broke it down, i- if you needed to put a placeholder of $2 million for one of those internal revenue, internal service funds, knowing that we're gonna spend some time, especially in this first year, with the subcommittee looking at, can, are there ways to, uh, avoid using that as a placeholder if we can come up with other alternatives?
Yeah, exactly.
I, I want to make sure that, uh, that we are voting today, today, and what I'm voting on is that, uh, that I, uh, as a member of this council, when I vote today, I'm expecting that, and if I see an area where I think that we need to, uh, readdress it, I can bring it back to the city council, uh, for discussion and, uh, for that particular li- item, and then we can, you know, we can decide, you know, what to do with that, especially with the subcommittee. You know, if we find out that, uh, we need to revisit a particular item, then we, we could make that recommendation to the city council, and then we, we, you know, depending on how the city also decide, if, if there's enough of us, then we will bring it back to the city council for a discussion and, and maybe an action. Is that, is that the, the normal order?
I think that's normal and understood. I mean, the whole process of approving any budget, it's never, uh, it's never set in stone, it's never static, it's a place marker to get you through the next evaluation of where things stand and you move forward.
Well, and, you know, just...
We can always make...
And just as I indicated, we will come back at, at minimum halfway a year from now with revenue projections, there could be mandates that come to us where we've got to adjust the budget. It's, it's not a perfect document that can't be touched. Now, I, obviously, it's our roadmap for the next two years with where we're going from an expenditure and revenue side, but, um, you know, the council is always free to make adjustments, and especially if you're working through, uh, some work with a subcommittee and, and we're looking at revenue projections, so.
May I?
Please.
Um, for this case, is it possible where we put the timeline, just like you recommended, for like, reevaluate the money in? Like sometime we have a new project in Garden Grove and it take about six to eight months down the line to see, actually to see whether revenue come in? So, we'd be able to see, you know, a report every, just say, six months or eight months so that we know, oh, there's a, the trending moving up, then it's the time to look at the budget and, and reanalyzing it and allocate where it needed the most.
And, and that's, I think, why I was suggesting, if you wanted to put in a placeholder with one of our internal revenues funds, it's, I think we all agree, that's not the number one place we wanna go to, and if we, as council member went, as you suggested, if we found out some ways along the, some steps along the way, maybe there was some, uh, one-time sales of property that might, you know, that might help us with, uh, avoiding that, or any other, uh, situations that might come to us, or things that, um, uh, you know, our work with the subcommittee might come up, would avoid us having to do that. Those are adjustments that we can make.
Okay.
So, with that, how do we proceed towards a motion to...
I would say...
Pass the budget based on discussion heard, how we...
Yeah, it would be, I think what we need is for somebody in council to make a motion that would be seconded and approved, um, that will have the force of law with the resolution for us to approve a budget. So, you know, whether someone wanted to make some sort of motion along the lines of what you suggested, and there was a placeholder, and along with it went, came some sort of, uh, setup of a subcommittee that we could hang our hats on and we could start meeting with right away, is, I think, what maybe we're looking for.
I, I would like to make a motion, an amended motion, uh, to, uh, approve this budget with the understanding that there will be a couple placeholder in it to address the deficit, uh, in the second years.
To spending that piece of the second year of the ERP, and just purely as a placeholder, uh, we would put in a placeholder that 2.2 million would come from the workers' comp fund. That would be, and then, it, but knowing full well that it's a placeholder and with the provisions that Councilman Bowie had indicated that he would like to see as a part of that, I think that would all give us the direction and the legal authority that we need to move forward with it.
And this also includes the balancing measures as proposed on slide 61 in year two.
Absolutely, yeah, yep, the...
Help bridge that second year from eight million down to 3.6, down to two, and then down to zero. If that, if you follow.
You're talking about the early retirement, the five percent and the...
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Early retirement plan, five percent budget cut, paramedic override.
Yeah, right. That's understood that that's...
And that, and that, the, yeah. Do you want us to fill in the blanks for year two, is what we're asking?
Yeah, that's, that's right. And that would be the 1.5 and the 2.2, the 1.5 for the ERP.
The balancing measures as prescribed on slide 61, plus the 1.5 from ERP, 2 million from workers' comp fund, zero, that just, that balanced our structural deficit in year two.
Yes.
Not, not in a pretty way, cause 2 million of that came from taking money out of reserves. We're gonna form a revenue subcommittee to study that, and we're probably gonna push for, um, some type of reserve analysis, deep dive, maybe a third-party audit, something like that.
Very well articulated.
Thank you. Motion second.
You ready?
Mm-hmm.
Motion received, seven years votes.
I think, before we go any further past that, we should address the two outstanding items that we talked about on that and sort of cover that. So, um, Chris, this is, this is sort of your babysitter, I don't know what you wanna, I don't wanna steal your thunder, this is your idea to form a revenue subcommittee.
The motion would be to, um, form, formulate, form a subcommittee of the city council directed towards, uh, viewing, you said the reserve, the analysis of...
Well, I would, just focus on your revenue, on your revenue one.
Yeah, it would be a, a subcommittee devoted to, a budget subcommittee of the city council to review, uh, well, critical needs, the levels of service, and then, uh, expenditures or revenues enhancement or development towards meeting those needs.
So, expenditure reductions or revenue enhancements?
Correct, that's, thank you. Even better.
And how do we narrow down who gets to be on that?
Volunteer. I like to volunteer for a subcommittee, if it's so for me.
Volunteered.
Yeah, I don't mind, I'd like to be on that, I mean, I, I'm a numbers guy, so.
I think the mayor should be in it.
The ma- yeah, the mayor probably should be in there.
I would actually, I would actually prefer not to be, just cause I think I will probably naturally be part of everything anyways.
Well, I think the mayor brought in some very pointed questions, maybe very, and I, I know it'd be very informative to have such a subcommittee, not speaking for you, but I'd like to suggest that you consider being a part of the subcommittee.
And who else?
No pressure, but...
Anybody else wanna be on it that's not getting...
That's your three.
That's your three.
I'll be on it. I'll be on it.
That's three, right?
Yeah. Okay, so I'll make a motion, or maybe someone else can make?
I did make the motion.
You did make the motion.
Just formulate the subcommittee. Is there a second to that?
Yeah, I'll second that. I'll second it, and did you want to name the participants, or, and then amend your motion?
Councilmember O'Neill, Councilwoman Nguyen.
Okay.
Kingwin.
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councilman Kim Nguyen.
So he made, was that seconded? Yeah. Call the vote.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and do a, Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember T. Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klavenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kay Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Second item, it says do it just reserves, money's placed in reserves. I think we've all had a year full of this from various groups. The, I mean, the negative side of it would opine that, that the city manufactures a artificial deficit by placing too much money in reserves and holding onto too much cash that could otherwise be spent every year, right? And I think we need to sort of dig that out and show where we actually stand. I don't think any of us sitting behind the dais really have a full picture of exactly where we stand on that. Be curious to know where our funds, where our various funds stand relative to other cities of our size, similar, that sort of thing. Just how they're contemplated, how they're calculated, that sort of thing. So I think that would be a prudent exercise for us to do that sort of study, and I think I would, probably wouldn't cost that much. I think we should probably hire a third-party outside audit to, to just answer that question in full transparency so that both sides of this street are on the same page in terms of how reserves are reserved.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we agree with you too, from our standpoint, and we could certainly, there's a third-party consultant, and let them dig into it, and somebody who's worked with a lot of other cities and knows what other cities' reserve funds are, and how they do things, and are we on the right track, are we way off track, you know, and let people that think we either have too much money or not enough money in reserve, that's, it's always a good exercise to hear that, so I think we're, we're.
And us as electeds get pushed and pulled on both sides of that, and we don't really know. We don't have the resources to dig into and try and discern it for ourselves in a big, crazy budget.
Now, I don't, what I, what I don't know is, and I don't think it would be a huge amount, but what I don't know is where the money's going to come from.
Can we, can we maybe, I don't know how we get this, but can we get a proposal on it, or get a bid on it? I mean, try and identify who would do it, or maybe try and identify a couple different groups who would do it, and get proposals from them, and say, how much would it cost? I, I can't imagine it would be a huge amount, I'd be surprised if it was, well, I don't even want to suggest any numbers, because.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm sure Kingsley, between Kingsley and I, and other, and our auditing folks, we can talk about, you know, all the big audit firms, KPMG, you know, all of them, they all have public sector specialized offices at Funk that specialize in this, and we could talk to any number of people and get some proposals and bring those forward to you.
Is this separate from the audit already going to be taking place with the vehicle, the vehicle audit?
I would say we roll it up into that, too. Like, I would say, yeah, because we were talking about doing that, but we didn't really define how that was going to be, and I'd say if we were just going down the path, that was heading more towards like an internal audit.
That's fine.
And I think that.
I just wasn't sure if the audit already started with that, and so.
I think that's the key fund that everybody kind of focuses in on, right? That, that has issue with this, with reserves in general, they focus on the vehicle fund. I think we need to take a holistic picture on all the reserves overall in aggregate, relative to our credit rating status, relative to the amount of reserves that should be in each of these funds.
Yeah, maybe for divvying.
Yeah, and it should be third-party so that it's transparent for the people who have issues with it.
And so, just so I understood, Councilmember Klavenstein's, because I think they are slightly different, I mean, we're talking about, what I think we're primarily talking about here is kind of a financial audit of, and looking at all the funds, and, you know, how are they broken down, and do we have the right amounts? The vehicle audit that I think I referenced early on, which maybe caused you to ask me a question about it, is more about taking a look at how many vehicles we have. Do we have too many? Does, does this department need 20, or do they need 18? Does, you know?
Information still plays a part in the overall outlook of the vehicle replacement fund, and so I don't know how that's going to fit in.
It does, but I think they can, I think we can continue some of the work that Public Works and our vehicle folks are doing with what they're, they're doing just their periodic review of, you know, which cars or which vehicles are maybe sitting too long and don't, and they've already done some of that, we've been looking at it. Bill's, Bill's folks have been working on that as we go, and we'll continue to do that, and it could fold into the bigger picture, but slightly different, I think, but we will go full speed ahead.
From a managerial perspective, we should continue to scrutinize that internally anyways. I think that the third-party audit kind of roots that out a little bit more, too, because it says, you need to show us why each fee department has so many vehicles, and it's part of the reserve analysis. By the way, like homeowners associations do this every year as a matter of practice that they have to do, you have to hire a third-party reserve analysis to come in and study, okay, how much do you got in the roof fund, and how many years you got roofed on the roof, and da-da-da. And they, they do this naturally, we should do this, too, so, I mean, it's, it's overdue, to have a third-party come in and just look at all the different funds, and why do we have so much money set aside for workers' comp, why do we have so much money set aside for that? Do we have too much, too little, too, you know, whatever? So. You need a motion on that?
No, there's no motion.
Yeah, or direction.
I think if your question is, would we, would staff go out and get an idea about what some proposals are and bring them back to council, we can.
I think bringing it back to the next meeting is an actionable item with some proposals of how much it would cost to do it.
Yes.
You know, if you came back, so it was going to cost $3 million to do a thing, then we'd say, wait, what? Doesn't make sense, but if it's.
No, we can definitely have that ready at the next council meeting, we've got to bring, so it'll be that, that second, that second meeting in July.
Yeah, good. Okay. Moving right along. Ordinances for second reading, 7A.
Actually, we've got an item for consideration.
6A. Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I skipped over 6A.
Okay, so item 6A is adoption of a resolution setting the time and date to conduct a public hearing to initiate the formation of underground utility district number 26 on Magnolia Street from Garden Grove Boulevard to Orangewood Avenue, and Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Mr. Pomeroy, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight's city council is being asked to adopt a resolution to initiate an underground utility district for Magnolia Street from Garden Grove Boulevard to Orangewood, that's about a mile and a half. The resolution will call for a public meeting and notify the affected property owners of the meeting. The project will use Southern California Edison Rural 28 funding. This is funding for undergrounding purposes that is included in every resident's SCE bill. The project will basically consist of removing the 42 utility poles on Magnolia and repairing the public improvements that are infected by, by undergrounding them. The existing conduits will be relocated underneath Magnolia Street, or undergrounded Magnolia Street. The estimated cost is almost $6 million. The city has accrued a little bit over $3 million in rural 28 funding. The remainder of the cost will be charged against future rural 28 revenues. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Mr. Murray, I got a question. So from, is it already underground from Orangewood to Catella, or, I'm trying to recollect that area, why does it stop at Orangewood, is it, instead of going to Catella, is that already underground?
I'm not aware whether that one is underground at this, at this time, I'd have to go out and check that, but we're really just looking for a good segment to do, and this one made sense.
Okay.
Just want to, since this bring, bring product, I just want to, if you can let me know what's being done for Brookhurst and other area like Brookhurst, Euclid, and maybe even Harbor?
Yeah, we've completed undergrounding on Brookhurst, it was actually just a year ago that the project got completed, and that was from Westminster to Garden Grove Boulevard, and we also did Brookhurst undergrounding from Chapman to Catella. There's a, you know, problem with Euclid is the high voltage lines, and if we do those, we're really limited to the start and ending points because of those high voltage lines. And with this $6 million, we'd only be able to do about a half a mile's worth of undergrounding because it's just such a, those poles are significantly bigger, just everything involved in undergrounding, the high voltage lines, it costs about three times as much as doing the types of projects that we're looking for, and which Magnolia is. So with the, with Magnolia Street, which, something that we identified, you know, we're going to get a good mile and a half, which will have a good visual impact for the residents in that area. We have done some undergrounding on Harbor, I don't recall the dates, but we have been working from street to street trying to fit, fit these projects in over the years. The truth of the matter is, is it takes quite a bit of time to accrue a decent amount of rural 28 money. So if we were to go forward with this particular project, we wouldn't be looking at another underground district for probably another five, six years.
What about Valley View?
I do recall that we have some undergrounding on Valley View, that was done a very long time ago. Like you said, just to move from the west end of the city and do some project on Valley View, and then move over, you know, say to, you know, Magnolia, Brookhurst, and what have you, to get from one end of the city to the other, and just do a little bit of undergrounding, you're looking at about a 15-year process, maybe 20 years.
As far as Euclid concerned, because of the, such a high voltage transmission line, how many, how many mile on Euclid do we have?
Like you said, if we were to spend this same amount of money on Euclid, we'd be able to get about a half a mile.
No, I'm not asking that, I'm clear on that. On Euclid, how much do we have? How many mile do we have existing, you know, above ground utility line?
Euclid is actually a, a center for main transmission line, so from the south end of the city all the way to the SR 22 is above ground, and those poles extend over, over the 22 and continue up, I don't think they go back underground again until the civic center area.
So we probably would still have about maybe four miles?
Yeah.
Five mile? And that would probably cost 6 million and a half a mile?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's 6 million for about a half mile now.
Wow.
You know, as, and it's not like the construction costs stay the same, and that, that's a heck of a project.
Do you think we can ask federal grant to help out with that? I see they, they did that on Prestone, and I talked to the Santana City, they said they got federal, federal grant to do that.
That was through a similar process or grant program that we were actually targeting with Harbor Boulevard, and the federal government.
Hopefully with the new infrastructure, you know, grant that, that President Trump is trying to, to improve, maybe you can get some fund, can you look into that?
If there's anything that comes available, well, you know, I know that tomorrow we're actually meeting to go over grant funding with a consultant, and if anything does come up, we'll, we'll make, we'll make that known.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make a motion?
Please.
To adopt a resolution setting the time and date to conduct a public hearing?
Second, call the vote. 7A ordinances for second reading.
Ordinance number 2884 presented for second reading and adoption entitled in ordinance of the city council, the city of Garden Grove, establishing the amount of money for paramedic services that must be raised by an ad valorem tax override and the setting of the tax rate of said override.
Second. Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Moving on to matters, we do have one item listed, 8A, which is the change of the illuminated Bolsa Avenue street sign. Would you like to kick this one off?
Sure. Well, last council meeting, we, we have, all the council member have agreed to put agenda for this council meeting, so regarding to the illuminated sign, we, Westminster have been changing all these street sign on Bolsa, along Bolsa from Magnolia to Ward with the add-on name, and the name is basically General Boulevard, if you look at the pictures. So in order to, for, the justification for us to, to move forward with the street sign is that we, in sync with the sign, because there's two intersection, part of Garden Grove is on Busha and Bolsa, Ward and Bolsa. So that's why I, council, Mayor Broten, Fatboy, and I, and as well as Mayor Steve Jones, was, last time we asked for to, to move this forward is first of all, to add the character to Little Saigon Business District, and the cost is very minimal, which is the cost for the street sign is 1476, $1,476, and, and basically it's gonna, I would like to request if we, if possible, that we can approve from the council contingency fund, and also, there's also, basically, we, the street sign going to be, take about six weeks to order. So I'm here to answer any questions if any council members.
Yeah, I have a few questions, if I may. One question is, why is the city of Westminster doing that, and that's, I assume, to promote Little Saigon area over there?
Yeah, it's a Little Saigon branding, basically.
And they inadvertently changed the signs already, or something to?
They have changed the sign in April, all the sign from Magnolia to Ward along Bolsa.
So if we were to do this, is this an essence promoting that same Little Saigon area?
Correct.
Okay.
I think one of the other, one of the other rationale for it is if we come on Bolsa to, from, let's say, from Magnolia to Ward, Busha, as we come to that intersection, you will see on the street side, there are two sign, one side on the south side would have this name change, with this name added to it on the Westminster side of it, and then on the north side of that street would be the Garden Grove side, which, which is different. So as we come approaching it, you see very different street name on the sign.
Yep.
And I think for consistency, it would be better to, to make the two of them consistent to each other, and so that's one of the, the other rationale behind this resolution.
You're talking about consistent with the naming and the words?
Yeah.
And the only difference is the color of the sign, because we're Garden Grove, do we have any current Garden Grove symbol?
We have blue color for the Garden Grove.
They had already put up the green sign, so the demarcation or the distinction is, you're leaving their city, you're leaving our city, you're going to theirs, or vice versa. So my question is, if we're promoting Little Saigon area, why don't we just put Little Saigon on the sign? It reflects Garden Grove side. I mean, I like to show the distinction between Westminster and there, but I also like to promote the Little Saigon shopping area as a destination, as a tourist attraction. I'll be honest, my preference is to have any kind of public signs in English, and this reflects just a tourist destination, a tourist area on a public sign, so philosophically or from a public expense, expense standpoint, I prefer to have more of a distinction of Little Saigon and the Garden Grove in our color, so I'm just throwing out there as a discussion point. What we're all, what we're really saying is, like, okay, it's all kind of the same mixed area, or same shopping area, the distinction is, we have a, a blue sign, they have a green sign. So I would be more inclined to say, you know, people coming in from out of town have an English Little Saigon tourist area, that, that's one idea, in lieu of being consistent with their area, have our own distinction, and maybe look at other areas where we border them and have our Little Saigon area as a shopping site, destination for tourists coming into town. Just a discussion point. Just a discussion point.
I have a question. So on our sign, it does say, does it say Garden Grove on it somewhere?
No.
Or no, it's just the color blue?
Just the color blue.
Okay. And it says Bolsa and then?
And then the add-on, in Vietnamese is General Boulevard.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it would, it would identically match Westminster's except for the color?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. And it said Boushaw and Ward, and, I'm sorry, Boushaw and Bolsa and Ward and Bolsa?
Correct.
To match the Westminster sign that's basically right next to it?
On the opposite.
On the opposite direction.
Right, and the reason this is happening is because, you know, we know about our district map, right? We have two famous finger, one finger, one little finger on Boushaw and Bolsa, and the other is the long finger that, you know, at Ward and Bolsa.
Right.
And so for that, this is the niche where Garden Grove and Westminster, you know, merge in term of, you know, we each say half of the script, you know, Bolsa.
And I just want to add to the thing is, it's going to minimize the cost in the installation can be covered for free by City Westminster.
It does say cost estimate, so is there a chance that this $1,400 and some odd dollars could go down or go up?
There's always a chance with construction that it'll go up. I'm sorry, there's always a chance with construction it'll go up, but it shouldn't be too much.
If it went up over this amount, is that something that could be fundraised for instead of maybe paid for by the city?
If it's go over the amount, then we can reevaluate, and we're gonna pay the difference if this gonna go much.
Would that be the appropriate fund to get it from? Is that okay? Do we have the money in there where council member mentioned? Mr. Manager?
We've looked at, yes, council, we've looked at it, and council does have $1,496 in your council contingency fund to cover that, if, if that's what the council chose to do.
Can I ask another question? So what's there now? Is the sign that says Bolsa and Ward and it has the, and so the only thing we're doing is at our cost, at $1,500 as a city of Garden Grove, we're gonna go out there and change it from green to blue? Why can't we just keep it green?
We're not changing the color, we're just changing the, the wording.
The, the name.
We're just adding the wording.
Yes.
Not changing the color.
Okay, so it's just Bolsa and it's Ward, and we don't put there, that anything, what, what's the big distinction of like, people still know it's Little Saigon area? We're just trying to be consistent and some uniformity with the city of Westminster? I, I don't, I don't see the purpose.
They, they added some, Westminster added-
We have the pictures.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so they added, so why can't we add what we want to add? Why does it have to be that? Is it uniform signage program in Little Saigon area? You can ask the Westminster?
From my understanding, it's their signs that they're giving to us, we're just changing the little flap that's inserted that's green, and we're changing it blue because that's our city color.
Okay, if we don't change anything, it just stays Bolsa and Ward?
Yeah, but then it's, if you, if you travel down on the Bolsa and you're gonna look on the right side, you're gonna see a Westminster sign say Bolsa with the add-on name underneath, and then you look on the right, right side, it just say Bolsa, even though on the same street, it's, it's not standardized, it's not in sync.
It will be standardized if it's green and, and, and blue, so it doesn't make sense either. I think we should just leave it the same, that's, that's my opinion, so.
So I guess at this point, we, maybe we can pers-
Is there a motion in a second for it?
I, I can motion for it.
I don't want to steal your thunder. Would you like to second it? Otherwise, I'll second it, but if you would like to second it since it's in your district.
Did we have a motion?
I have motion, yes. I, I call for the motion.
DeFrey, you figured you would want to second it.
No, no, I, I second.
Okay, I figure.
I didn't hear the, she, she said she make the motion, so.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I'd like to call the vote.
Motion received, six yes votes with Councilmember Beard voting no.
Thank you. Which brings us just in general to matters from council members and city managers, so.
Try me? Okay, okay. I just want to give a toast to our city manager for bringing these, and Seven Leaves for coming in here. It's a fine business, and it's a fine drink that you brought to us. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Yay!
Since we won't be having a council meeting until after the Fourth of July, I want to wish everybody is safe and sane on Fourth of July, and remind people that illegal fireworks are illegal, $1,000 citation. The police force will be out in full force and the fire department, but I would ask that maybe we could have a report on July 25th at our next meeting to see what the outcome was of, of the fireworks and what happened. Just a verbal, if that's doable, if the council's agreeable to that. And in that time, until now, in our next council meeting, I want to announce, well, I'm glad to say it'll be my 26th wedding anniversary, and it's my opportunity to publicly proclaim my everlasting love for my wife, and we're going, it'll be your 26th wedding anniversary, so I wish you, again, everybody is safe and sane on Fourth of July, and I want to thank my wife for marrying me.
Okay, so I just wanted to let everybody know that this council, and myself in particular, is very aware of the criminal activity we have and, and the situation that we have here in Garden Grove, just like every city has right now with the crimina, the criminals, the violence, the homelessness, we're dealing with all these issues all at the same time. We're very well educated on every one of these situations. We all want to hire as many police officers as we can right now, but we have to be prudent, like the mayor said, his analogy, you know, we don't want to make more holes in the boat. We've got, you know, we have a good plan to bring on more police, and the police chief is, is with us on that, and we're gonna fund as many as we can possibly fund, but we all have to do our due diligence out there as neighbors, watch out for each other, take care of your neighborhood, call the, the non-emergency line. We all got to do our part, we're gonna buckle down and, and protect our community, so we're gonna do that. Number two, just everybody have a great Fourth of July, enjoy your time celebrating and with your family, and be safe. Thank you.
Tua.
Yes, just I want to say thank you to the city staff, thank you Kingsley, thank you Maria, and everybody else, thank you Scott, and thank you Bill. All of you have been working very hard for the budget. We, we couldn't move forward with all of your input and advice and educational sessions that every single time we look at the number, I run away from it. At the bottom line is, we have a good council, and we, we all have the same passion to promote Garden Grove, as well as to focus on safety and, and love our city. That, that's our passion right there, and so once again, I'm glad that we'd be able to have something move forward tonight, and I look forward for the subcommittee to save us, right?
No pressure, sure.
No pressure.
None whatsoever.
That's her.
Thank you. Kim won.
Couple of things, thank you staff for your work on the budget. I know that it's difficult, and we all feel your pain, so thank you for the time you dedicated to that. Happy early Fourth of July, stay safe, and lastly, I'd like to congratulate my stepfather for gaining citizenship to this country.
Cool.
Congratulations.
Couple of things as well, obviously, thank you for all the diligent work you've done on the budgets, appreciate it, I know it's not an easy job, and I want to just bring to light an event that's coming up on July 12th. The Downtown Business Association and the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association are partnering to do a meet on Main. It'll be July 12th at 6:45 at the Courtyard. Master Officer Brian Hatfield will be there with the special resource team. He's gonna give his full presentation, and there'll be a question and answer period, so it'll be a great opportunity for the public to come out and learn more about what the special resource, special resource team is doing towards the homeless crisis here in Garden Grove, and just an opportunity to ask questions about the homeless issue in general. So I think that'll be a great event. Again, it's July 12th, 6:45 at the Courtyard Center here by the Village Green, and have a great Fourth of July.
Mayor Protem.
I'd like to wish everyone a very joyful and safe July 4th, and I would like to urge everyone to be considerate of, of our dogs and cats, they are very vulnerable to, you know, the South, the firecrackers, and, you know, while we're having fun, you know, let be compassionate and considerate of that as well.
I just want to congratulate Sonny Wen and his family and Seven Leaves, that, we did that earlier, but I mainly just want to comment on his comments, which I believe were unsolicited, unscripted, and from the heart. I think he was tickled when he saw that you had gone out and gotten the, his product and brought it in here, and he wasn't expecting that, and I think that sort of touched his heartstrings a little bit and got him to kind of monologue a little bit about his experiences with this city relative to the cities he's opening up his 10 other stores in, in recent months. So someone from the private sector, small family business owner on the grow, dealing with a lot of different cities, and is having a very pleasurable experience in this city, and I think that speaks volumes to just how good we're doing, how solid our staff is in terms of reaching out that red carpet and dragging people like him into town and saying, we want you here, and we want to help you expand your business, and we want you to stay here, and we want you to grow here. I think that signal and that message is getting out there to the business community, and I think that's evident in the words that he kindly said from the heart, so we appreciate those words, and we appreciate him being based here in Garden Grove. But that'll defer to the city manager for any-
Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, members of council, on the July 12th homeless event, I think it might be a good opportunity also for our representative from City Link to maybe be there and talk a little bit about how they will interact with police on helping on some of our homeless issues, so I'll have a conversation with them and our PD about that.
That'd be great.
The police and fire, just to reiterate on the, the fireworks and just keeping it with legal fireworks, I know our police, for anybody listening, our police and fire departments will be very grateful for anybody who can refrain from that and encourage your neighbors to do the same. They'll appreciate it, a lot of, a lot of us will appreciate it, so that's good. And then finally, I just want to thank Kingsley, all the people in the finance department for all the work that they've done on the budget, including Maria and Sean Park, who were part of our executive budget committee, and Eifert, you know, our new budget manager, and, you know, I was pushing this idea of doing a two-year budget a while ago. I knew a lot of cities have done it, it was going to be a little new for Garden Grove. I think, I appreciate all your patience in trying to think through it, I think it'll help us in the long run. Kingsley and I had lots of debate and discussion about the wisdom or idiocy of doing a two-year budget, so, but I think, I think it'll work out well for us, and it gives us a chance to think a little more, longer term, and next year at this time, we won't have quite as long a meeting ideally, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you. On that note, we are adjourned to closed session, and we'll come back and report out as necessary after.
Yes.